Good evening and welcome to the Select Board Wage and Personnel Board of Tuesday, October 21st, 2025 at 5:45 PM at the Lakeville Police Station. Is there anyone else recording besides Lake Cam? Hearing no one, I'd like to move on to call to order.
What, President?
Plug Aye.
Peter O'Gee?
Carbonee here.
All right, and on to the Pledge of Allegiance, which is in the flag is the banner of the room. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you everyone for coming tonight. It's good to see some attendance and thank you to the Finance Committee. Would you like to?
We don't start till six.
You don't start till six, all right. We will move on to other agenda items. First agenda item is the Select Board announcements. Current committee commission vacancies include associate member for the ZBA, a member for the Board of Registrars, two vacancies on the Cable TV Advisory Committee, one vacancy on the Communications and Community Outreach Committee, one at-large member for the Zoning Bylaw Review Advisory Committee, and one member of the School Committee. Details on this position can be found on the town's Facebook page and the town's website at www.lakvilleMA.org under News. Announcements for today are the Rainbow Workshop with Sarah Martin, Thursday, November 6th, 6 to 7 PM. She's a Nashville recording artist and local author promoting her first publication, The Rainbow Workshop Coloring Book, so bring your children. Is this on the website as well?
I don't believe this one is yet, no.
Can we just pop it somewhere, even if it's just a Facebook thing, so people can link right to it? The second item is the Second Annual Snow Person Jubilee, which I believe we have snow people here tonight with Sue Spielert holding up a snow person behind us. Starting October 4th, purchase a snow person for $25, create your design on the 31-inch corrugated plastic template, decorate and add a message for your holiday wish and return by November 30th. There'll be a display on the Old Town Hall for the month of December and then on December 13th, 2 PM, you could come and hang out at the Snow Person Village, drink some hot cocoa, join the caroling, and have some fun with family and friends. There'll be awards for first, second, and third place. We also, the day after, because this is the 13th, the day after, we have the Lakeville Country Christmas Stroll. Enjoy a unique twist on a traditional parade, you walk, the parade stays. Details of that are on the website and we do have a Facebook posting, I believe, on it, and we can bump that up.
Same day?
Same day. One says the 13th and one says the 14th.
Rain date's the 14th.
Come to the village on Saturday. Thank you, rain date. They're both the 13th, thank you for the clarification. Any further announcements from our Select Board?
We had the Trunk or Treat event yesterday. My understanding, over 500 participants.
Wow, that's way more than last year, too.
Yep, and Farmer Paul was right there handing out the candy and Witch Carbonee. We had Colleen and Emily was there also.
Well, I appreciate everyone showing up and showing up for the people of Lakeville. Next item on the agenda is the Town Administrator's Report. Andrew, would you like to take it away?
Yeah, just a couple of small items. Capital budget requests were due a couple of weeks ago. We've kind of gone through about 95% of them. So we're going to schedule Capital Expenditures Committee probably in two weeks, maybe three weeks. It's going to be probably three meetings total. So we're starting it a lot earlier than years past. And then the other one is we interviewed for the Assistant Town Accountant this past week and we're looking to extend an offer very soon. So, that's all I have.
Fantastic. I have no questions. Anyone have any questions for the Town Administrator on his items on his report? Okay. We do have appointments on the schedule today and I do see one of the appointees. Is it okay with the Board? I'll just take that out of order. We're going to go on to Appointments and Licenses. Number three, discuss and possible vote to appoint Leah Fabian to the Community Preservation Committee and as the Housing Designee. I saw Leah come in. Leah, would you like to come up and speak?
Sure.
All right, please have a seat at the open mic.
Here?
Thank you.
Welcome. Thanks.
How is everyone?
We received your letter and you're looking to fill the seat for the Housing Designee.
Yes.
As we don't have a housing committee, it's a little bit less rigorous than some of the others, but it has to have someone that has an interest in housing. So I was hoping that you would speak today and tell us a little bit how you're interested in the committee and what you think you can bring to the role.
Okay, so as I stated in my letter, and I think, I think it was in the back, I knew that CPA had two failed attempts, but I still thought it was really worthwhile. So when Michelle and I, Michelle McGecon and I, had the opportunity to talk about it and rallied some support with Sue and Mike Schroeder back then and a whole bunch of other people, I kind of went into the background, they took care and they did the, all the campaigning, got it passed, which, you know, I thought was great. Well, as we know, a selectman doesn't sit on that seat. So now that I'm not a selectman, Select Board member anymore, I feel like it would come full circle for me. But the reason I feel like I can fill that particular housing seat is because when I was on the Select Board for six years, I represented, you know, the town and the Select Board with the Taunton Housing Consortium, which had to do with all kinds of housing issues. Some that applied to the town of Lakeville, some that don't, some that had to do with HUD money, grant money, that folks could use to renovate their existing properties and, you know, in the hopes of turning things affordable. So there's that whole affordable component there that we would constantly discuss. I dealt with a lot of the water issues for town, which sort of gave me a whole new understanding of how water applies to housing. So it is a challenge for us in Lakeville to try to, you know, use the money appropriately for housing because it doesn't end up being millions of dollars every year. But, you know, I think over time, maybe we will be able to use it for those appropriate reasons. And, you know, for me, it's sort of coming full circle to be able to sit on that committee.
Fantastic.
Yep, and also I had done some of the Affordable Housing Lotteries with the Middle Borough Housing Authority, which, you know, so a whole understanding of how like the lottery stuff works and all that other stuff.
And then their whole other life as assessors.
A whole other life, knowing how all that property is assessed and taxed and, yeah. Yep, so.
I'm going to open up some questions from the Board.
Madam Chair, I'm familiar with Ms. Fabian's accomplishments and achievements, so I think she'd be a great addition to the CPC.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If nothing, I'll take a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to appoint Leah Fabian to the Community Preservation Committee as the Housing Designee to fill an unexpired term through 7/31/2028.
I'll second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, welcome.
Unaye.
Plug Aye.
Peter O'Gee.
Carbonee Aye.
Welcome back.
Thank you, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Very good, and we have another appointee for Suzanne Plonka. Would Suzanne like to speak?
Hello.
Welcome.
My name is Suzanne Plonka, probably know my dad. I live on 41 Baker Lane and I'm requesting appointment to the Anniversary Committee because I have offered to write the latest edition of the town history of Lakeville. A little bit about me and my credentials with writing. I am a sophomore at the Southern New Hampshire University where I study professional and technical writing. I'm also an agented author, and for those who don't know what that means, I am signed with a literary agency and my books are now under consideration by traditional publishers such as Penguin Random House, Simon &amp; Schuster, and Harper Collins. I am looking forward to starting on this project as history and writing are my passions and I am excited to combine both in such a way that will preserve the town of Lakeville's legacy in both a historically accurate and entertaining fashion.
That is fantastic. Really appreciate you coming in, especially we love having younger members of the community coming in and being part of the community early on. I'm going to open it up to the Board for any questions.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
No questions from you.
So Madam Chair, my unbiased opinion is I believe my daughter would be a great addition.
You want, you want, you want her? That's shocking.
My unbiased opinion.
Shocking.
For the record.
No questions.
No questions. If we have no further questions, then I will take a motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint Suzanne Plonka to the 170th Anniversary Committee for one-year term to expire on June 30th, 2026.
Seconded.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, welcome.
Unaye.
Plug Aye.
You can't aye.
Oh, all right. Plonk, grab, stand.
Peter O'Gee.
Carbonee Aye.
Fantastic, and welcome aboard.
Thank you. Thank you.
It's a lovely crowd tonight, you guys should come here every night. Vote to appoint Ronald Burgess to the Middle Borough Lakeville Herring Fishing. I don't think he's here.
No, he's not.
No?
No.
Okay.
No.
Then I will, actually, we still have time for it, so I'm, we have the letter in that packet. I did see it. Had Mr. Burgess been a member previously as well?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay.
One time.
Okay, yeah.
Then I will, then I will take a motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint Ronald Burgess to the Middle Borough Lakeville Herring Fisheries Commission for a three-year term to expire September 30th, 2028.
Seconded.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, welcome.
Unaye.
Plug Aye.
Peter O'Gee.
Carbonee Aye.
And then the last item would be accept the resignation of Gary Mansfield from the Old Colony School Committee. I'd like to take this time, it's always hard whenever we have to accept resignations of our long-term volunteers, but Gary and Marilyn have been volunteering for the town since long before I moved here and I'm very thankful for everything that they've done for the town in the last, gosh, is it 30 years of volunteering?
One time.
Yes, so anything anyone else would like to add?
Madam Chair, again, I've known Gary for many years since I moved to town and I can honestly say there is no bigger advocate for Old Colony than Mr. Mansfield. So I do want to recognize his many years of service and dedication to Old Colony. Appreciation, I appreciate his efforts.
He's been a pillar of the community for as long as I can remember. Anyone else?
Wonderful human being.
Thank you very much for your service to the town, Mr. Mansfield. I'll reluctantly take a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the resignation of Gary Mansfield from the Old Colony School Committee.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Welcome.
Unaye.
Plug Aye.
Peter O'Gee.
Carbonee Aye.
Great, and that brings us to 6 o'clock.
Close enough.
Looking.
I will call to order the October 21st, 2025 Lakeville Finance Committee meeting at 6 PM.
Will call Barbara McTosky present?
Tanyi present.
Costin present.
Wright present.
Beal's present.
We are now entering into a joint meeting with the Finance Committee to review the warrant and provide recommendations to each individual article. This is a kind of new process for us, I think this is the second time we've done this, reviewing each article instead of all of them as a whole. So we're still working out the kinks on doing that. The Finance Committee, Town Moderator, and Town Clerk have been invited and the warrant article proposers are also invited to attend. So, do we want to do a joint? I think we did joint last time.
I thought we did, I thought we did separate.
Well, I'm going to defer to you, my memory not so good.
Ideally, I'd like to see like a vote from each committee.
Got it?
Basically taking a vote whether they favor black one or not on each one.
Is that agreeable to everyone?
Yes.
That was good.
Thank you. So let us go through the articles. And I will let you take over for your first reading of it and your vote.
You want me to read it?
You can read it.
All right, sure. Here we go. Article 1, "To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $814.50 from free cash and $546.27 from Park Commission retained earnings to pay for the following unpaid bills from the prior fiscal year or take any other action relative thereto." Line 1, Department Veterans Vendor Veterans Reimbursement Amount $351, funding source free cash. Line 2, Police Department M&amp;S Automotive $35, free cash. Line 3, Human Resources Advantage Drug Testing $235, free cash. Line 4, Human Resources Voya Benefits $78, free cash. Line 5, IT Green River Associates, Inc., $115.50, free cash. Line 6, Park Commission J-SAN Gas Service, Inc., $546.27 retained earnings for a total of $1,360.77.
Are there any questions about these charges? These all look like normal housekeeping issues. Don't seem anything out of the norm for them. Are there any questions for the?
I just have one question, what's our current free cash?
Uh, it is, it's, I can answer it. I might get the numbers crossed, but it's $1,755,558. Before this, obviously.
Thank you. Any other questions to the Finance Committee? If not, I guess we'll vote.
I do have one quick question. There's a few here from 2023. What happened with those? Did they just get sent late or did they, you know, get lost along the way?
Do we, can you come up and, do you have to go on the mic? Please introduce yourself.
Mike Ellis, Finance Director. So those are actually withholdings from personnel paychecks that were withheld and they weren't paid. I think we were paying them on an annual basis and some of them were kind of grandfathered in on a monthly basis and they just slipped through the cracks and didn't get paid, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, that's the $78 bill.
Yeah, they all pertain to Voya. They're individual amounts of like $14.50 and $15, but they totaled $78.
Okay. Thanks.
That's good.
Any other questions, Finance Committee? No, one of those, just go.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Article 1 and its presented here.
Seconded.
Call in favor, Barbara McTosky Aye.
Tanyi Aye.
Austin Aye.
Wright, Beal's Aye.
Select Board, should we have any questions about any of the items that have not already been answered? And I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to recommend Article 1 for the special town meeting, Wednesday, November 12th, 2025.
Seconded.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, welcome.
Unaye.
Plug Aye.
Peter O'Gee.
Carbonee Aye.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Would you please select who will be reading that question at town meeting?
Who would like to read this at town meeting? Do we have any volunteers?
Happy to read it. Thank you.
Member Carbonee. And if there's anything you feel passionate about reading, call it out. Article 2, and I'm going to pass it on to you because you're going to vote for it.
The whole thing? Okay.
That would be fine.
Great.
It's for practice for the next annual when you do the whole budget.
All right. Those are just numbers, that's easy. Okay. Article 2, "To see if the town will vote to amend the Town Code, Chapter 15, Boards and Committees, Article 7, Community Preservation Committee as shown below with additions shown in bold or take any other action relative thereto." Article 7, Community Preservation Committee. Section 1525, Establishment. A, there is hereby established a Community Preservation Committee consisting of nine voting members pursuant to Mass. General Law C44B. The composition of the committee, the appointment authority, and the term of the, term of office for the committee members shall be as follows. One, one member of the Conservation Commission is designated by the commission for a term of three years. Two, one member of the Historical Commission is designated by the commission for a term of three years. Three, one member of the Planning Board is designated by the board for a term of three years. Four, one member of the Park Commission is designated by the commission for an initial term of one year and therefore for a term of three years. Five, one member of the Open Space Committee is designated by the committee for an initial term of one year and thereafter for a term of three years. Six, four Lakeville resident at-large members to be recommended by the Community Preservation Committee and appointed by the Select Board. One member to be appointed for a term of one year and therefore for a term of three years and three members to be appointed for a term of two years and thereafter for a term of three years, provided that one of the two-year appointments shall be an individual with interest in the area of housing. B, each member of the committee shall serve for the terms specified above or until the person no longer serves on the board, committee, commission, or authority as set forth above, whichever is earlier. C, should any of the commissions, boards, authorities, or committees who have appointment authority under this chapter be no longer in existence for whatever reason, the appointment authority for that commission, board, authority, or committee shall become the responsibility of the Select Board. D, any member of the committee may be removed for cause by their respective appointing authority after a hearing. Section 1526-26 Duties. A, the Community Preservation Committee shall study the needs, possibilities, and resources of the town regarding community preservation. The committee shall consult with existing municipal boards, including the Conservation Commission, the Historical Commission, the Planning Board, and the Park Commission, or persons acting in those capacities or performing like duties in conducting such studies. As part of its study, the committee shall hold one or more public informational hearings on the needs, possibilities, and resources of the town regarding community preservation possibilities and resources, notice of which shall be posted publicly and published for each of two weeks preceding a hearing in a newspaper of general circulation in the town. B, the Community Preservation Committee shall make recommendations to the town meeting for the acquisition, creation, and preservation of open space, for the acquisition, preservation, restoration, and rehabilitation of historical resources, for the acquisition, creation, and preservation of land for recreational use, for the creation, preservation, and support of community housing, and for rehabilitation or restoration of such open space, land for recreation use, and community housing that is acquired or created as provided in this section. With respect to the community housing, the Community Preservation Committee shall recommend, wherever possible, the reuse of existing buildings or construction of new buildings on previously developed sites. C, the Community Preservation Committee may include in its recommendation to the town meeting a recommendation to set aside for later spending funds for specific purposes that are consistent with community preservation but for which sufficient revenues are not then available in the Community Preservation Fund to accomplish that specific purpose or to set aside for later spending funds for general purposes that are consistent with community preservation. D, in every fiscal year, the Community Preservation Committee must recommend either that the legislative body spend or set aside for later spending not less than 10% of the annual revenues in the Community Preservation Fund for open space, not including land for recreational use, not less than 10% of the annual revenues in the Community Preservation Fund for historic resources, and not less than 10% of the annual revenues in the Community Preservation Fund for community housing. Section 15-27, Requirement for Quorum and Cost Estimates. The Community Preservation Committee shall not meet or conduct business without the presence of a quorum. Majority of the members of the Community Preservation Committee shall constitute a quorum. The Community Preservation Committee shall approve its actions by majority vote. Recommendations to the town meeting shall include their anticipated costs. Section 15-28 Amendments. This chapter may be amended from time to time by a majority vote of the town meeting, provided that the amendments would not cause a conflict to occur with Mass. General Law C44B. Section 15-29 Severability. In case of any, in case any section, paragraph, or part of this chapter may be for any reason declared invalid or unconstitutional by any court of last resort, every other section, paragraph, and part shall continue in full force and effect. Section 15-31 Effective, amended 11-8-2021 STM by Article 8 AG approved 2/24/2022. This bylaw shall take effect upon the town's acceptance of the Community Preservation Act in accordance with the procedures set forth in Chapter 44B of the General Laws and after all requirements of Mass. General Law C40, Section 32 have been met. Sponsored by Community Preservation Committee.
Would a member of the Community Preservation Committee like to speak to this? I feel like Tom Sawyer right now. You're reading the whole thing.
It's all right.
Michelle McGecon, Community Preservation Committee. Thank you for reading that, I don't plan on reading that at town meetings. We don't have to. We'll just be adding about five words, three conjunctions to Section 1525A6, which says, "Recommended by the Community Preservation Committee and Appointed." So this just adds words to dictate that the committee can review the applicants for the at-large housing, or not housing, but at-large member seats and then send the recommendation over for appointment by the Select Board. I believe this is a typical process for other appointed committees and so we were just looking to get that on the bylaw. So it's not just up for interpretation, you know, depending on what Select Board is in place.
Yeah, and I don't know if it's codified in all of the individual charters in such a way. This is probably the tightest language for any of them that I saw.
And I literally copied it from the Planning Board Associate Member, so it was reusing what we have.
Ready? I, I'll make a motion, Finance Committee would like to make a motion for no recommendation on Article 2 as written.
Do you have a second? Second.
No, I think we should be making a recommendation.
Okay, good.
No.
Costin Aye.
Wright Aye. Beal's Aye.
All right. So the Finance Committee did not make a recommendation?
We don't have a recommendation.
Madam Chair, can I have the question, please?
Um, yeah, sure. Come up to the mic, please.
Rich LaCamara, 32 Old Proudhouse Road. I, unless I missed it, there was no, nothing in there about the CPA meeting with the Open Space Committee, I was a little confused by that. Did I miss that?
I don't recall what I read.
You said you were going to meet with the Conservation, the Planning Board, and these other committees, but you said nothing about the Open Space Committee.
There was one member.
I might, I might have missed it.
Yeah, let me see. It's on five.
Number five.
Yeah, one member of the Open Space Committee is designated by the committee for an initial term of one year.
No, I know that, but they talked about meeting with the different boards to talk about, you know, preservation and stuff like that, so.
I'm looking at 1526 duties and I see Conservation, Historical, Planning, Park. No, no open space.
Future amendments.
Thank you. Would you mind very much coming back up just in case a board had some questions? Thank you very much.
Yeah, I mean, I wasn't part of writing this bylaw. This actually was accepted by the town prior to acceptance of the CPA itself. So this was already on the books, so to speak. So this was already on the books, so to speak, but we do include a member of open space on the committee. Um, and it does say somewhere in here that we gather input from all boards in, in town, I believe.
Would you like to add in more specific language, or?
Not without the review of the committee.
Okay.
And recommendation, so. Not at this time.
Okay, and then I had another question on another line. It's for fifteen twenty-five, uh, Section Six D. Any member of the committee may be removed for cause by their respective appointing authority after a hearing. Do we have that for any other boards, committees, and commissions, or do the, do they serve at the pleasure of the Board of Selectmen?
Probably just at the pleasure of the Board of Selectmen, I imagine.
I think I'd prefer if all the language was consistent for all the boards, committees, and commissions, but.
So, just to be clear, so that, that means that if Planning Board decides, I'm not gonna be on Planning Board, it, they want Dan to be on CPC. That's how I would interpret it. Because it's not, this is an appoint, these are members who are already serving on other committees, commissions, et cetera, that now are joining CPC, representing those boards. So I, I think it's up to the board, you know, to say, to vote, to recommend whoever it is, you know, to represent them. So that's how I interpret that.
So it's just their respective board, because I was reading it, their respective appointing authority, and that, that would be the Board of Selectmen.
But the, but the appointing authority is that board or committee? Because for Planning Board, we vote to appoint me. Right?
But it's a recommendation, right? So that's the board that's recommending.
Oh, correct, yes.
Yeah, so the language is off there.
So you think it's
In my estimation, anyways, um, that the respective board or the respective Advisory Board, because whenever you're talking about the appointing authority.
After a hearing.
It's always goes back to the Select Board in, in my experience. I'm absolutely happy to hear other people's interpretation on it. Madam Chair, may I ask, the language that reads under Section A, it says, "There is hereby established a CPA committee consisting of nine voting members. The composition of the committee, the appointment authority, and the term of the office for the committee members shall be as follows. The Conservation Commission is designated by the commission." Or maybe the Historical Commission has designated by that commission. But it looks like the commission is appointing them.
Is the appointing authority.
Except for the residents-at-large, which is in question. So, are you saying that it should be appointing commission instead of authority? Or are you saying that authority just designates? Yeah, I think the language, the authority, yeah, the authority usually just refers to the Select Board in, in those type of matters. So it kind of, it splits the baby a little bit on the language. Well, one through five appear to be the boards, but item six would be the Select Board. Yeah. So you can't have removal be different. Yeah, so that was just a
So we can, I can definitely put it before the committee, and we can look at it and see if there's other changes to bring.
I'm just, I'm just one member.
But that's fine. We can look at it for spring. You know, obviously, it's too late to do anything for fall, but.
Um, any other, again, Madam Chair, I know any other subcommittees that the Select Board has, you know, created and asked for other members, for example, Z-E-R-A-C. There were recommendations coming from different boards, committees, and commissions, and then those appointments were done by the appointing authority.
Right, yeah.
So I think, I think, like Barbara pointed out, that's the confusion. Because the, the bylaw says that these commissions are the appointing authority, but really, the way the town does it, it still goes to the Select Board.
Yeah, so that's my only issue, the consistency there and the confusion that it could create.
Yeah, we can Madam Chair, just for clarification, for purposes of the special town meeting, we're only going to be voting on the recommended change that we reviewed this evening, correct?
Yes.
Item six. Right, I just wanted to make that for clarification.
Which do you want means that we can wait until spring for the additional changes to be made, because they brought this forward because they probably have the means that they need to appoint? Because of, what is it, bylaw seventy-four dash eighteen? If this goes before the, um, the general legislature, we can't make any changes on town meeting floor. So. Am I correct?
You can make small changes. You can make
Ministerial changes?
Yeah, you can make word changes. You can make corrections.
Would this be a ministerial change along with?
It depends on what you're going to change. I mean, I would need to see what you're proposing to change before I say, yeah, that's going to be allowed.
So if, instead of respective appointing authority, it said respective delegating authority, or delegating board?
Yeah, you could add that. I mean, we made changes when we were going from a three to a five, um, from the floor, because they were small. They did not change materially
Yep.
The article.
Didn't change the intent.
It didn't change the intent. It just clarified something. So you could add an amendment, but that would have to come as an amendment.
Right.
So you would just have
And our committee wasn't planning on meeting, so we'd have to arrange a meeting to review.
Right.
Or you can amend it on town meeting.
You can, you just amend on the town meeting floor. You could say, "I propose this amendment," and then you can say, "We're changing this word to this word."
Sorry to be nitpicky. It just came across as weird when I read it.
No, I agree, but do we also want it to be more thoroughly reviewed by town council because of
Oh, it should be.
Other, maybe there's other changes?
Well, I wouldn't, I would try not to make a lot of changes if, I mean, I would, if there's a simple fix to just changing a word so that it clarifies it.
But like Rich pointed out, if open space is missing, we shouldn't do that.
That is, that is different. That's adding something that wasn't there. And I think it would, you either, I'm not telling exactly what to do, but you might want, unless you have a pressing need to do this right now, to, for your members, um, you might want to delay until and do it all at once in spring, where you have all of your language correct, you have Mr. Corbo or, um, town council take a look at it and make sure that it's all there. Because this then has to go, once it's done, doesn't it have to be? Does it have to be brought to the Attorney General? Yeah, it has to be brought back to the Attorney General. So how many times do you want to do that?
Right.
But if you have a pressing reason to do at least this part?
Well, yeah, more so just, we typically bring other things to spring to get this done at this point.
So we could take the vote, and then if your board, if you brought it back to your board, you guys could come to town meeting and either decide to make a ministerial change or to pull it and have it at spring. That way, your, your board can weigh in on it.
That just postpones it until Once, once the meeting's dissolved, all business is done, and you just bring it back to, to the spring, the annual.
Any further questions, comments, callouts?
Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes.
Um, so you were talking about, in this case, the CPC would have a hearing about moving a member for cause?
No, no, to me, that's like the appointing board.
Okay, so we are on the Select Board, remove for cause. Or, or
So, well, what Maureen had just suggested was respective delegating board. So that wouldn't go to the Select Board. That would go to the individual committee or board.
And, and just so I'm clear, my definition of for cause has always been misconduct, conflict, or harm. So it, that's, I think, the legal definition of cause. So I think the appointing authority would have to have a hearing and not an individual.
So it would be multiple hearings, basically, or a joint hearing?
There, there would have to be some type of joint hearing. A specific board customarily would not have a hearing about misconduct of one of their board members.
No, and I don't think the language is there, and anyone can correct me, on a hearing for any other appointments. I think this is unique to that about even having a hearing.
Right, and Madam, Madam Chair, is, is it even appropriate to even have it included in this? Because we actually have a recall bylaw on its own at this point, too.
Yeah, I don't, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure of the intent there, because the language is a little
Right.
Fuzzy.
Yeah, well, like I said, it's been existing. That's been on the books for a while. I don't think it's ever been brought up or challenged or questioned.
Any other? Okay, um, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to recommend, um, Article Two as presented.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Plug aye.
Um, candido with, uh, just bringing it to town meeting and, uh, I'm, I'm voting yes, but the yes is to just bring it to town meeting to, to finish it, not necessarily in support of the language.
Carbone, aye.
Very good. Thanks, everybody.
You'll be reading this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you'll be speaking to this on town meeting floor? Ms. McCaffrey?
Yes.
You'll be speaking to this on town meeting floor?
Yes.
Okay. I don't want to get in trouble.
She already confirmed.
Okay.
She, she left, she left golden with a star.
Article Three.
Article Three, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds twenty-five thousand dollars to fund a building study slash design for the renovations and building updates necessary to facilitate the reuse of the Lakeville Fire Station and Town Hall located at three forty-six Bedford Street, Lakeville, Massachusetts, and anything incidental or related thereto, or take any action relative thereto. Sponsored by Select Board.
Question?
Uh, yeah, can someone just kind of, oh, maybe Andrew can give us a, like, an overview about what this is?
Andrew, you have that breakdown from our meeting the other night?
I do.
I didn't forget with me.
I do. So there was a study done a few years ago. Um, I talked to a few people. The feedback was that it wasn't, um, what it could be, so we wanted a fresh look at it. Um, we talked with the Town Hall Building Reuse Committee. We thought if we could put some money towards, um, an analysis of some sort, work in conjunction with staff, to put together a, um, I guess, a building plan, design. Um, I think the, the committee kind of realizes we don't have a lot of money to actually do the construction, so we're looking at some sort of phasing option. So the, the, the funds that they laid out, um, the architect would be sixty-five hundred dollars, the structural engineer would be thirty-five hundred, hazmat and abatement study would be twenty-five hundred, mechanical engineer would be four thousand, and the OPM services would be eighty-two hundred, which brings it to twenty-four thousand seven hundred dollars. So, um, part of that is staff is gonna be doing a space needs assessment update. Um, they did one maybe three years ago. Just me looking through it, it looks like it's way too ambitious. I think it could kind of be peeled back. At least, I think our office, we looked at ours, I think we cut it in half. So, um, I think this, this design, I guess, maybe the committee, another committee member could, um, have some opinion on it, but we thought it was small money, smart money, um, to get some sort of design, a realistic one.
To not, yeah, to not overbuild.
Yeah, because we're not gonna, we're not gonna do a big debt exclusion type of project. So, um, this is just the preliminary design for it.
Mr. Hunt, did you have anything to add?
No, that was the discussion at the meeting the other night, and, um, I think that's the direction we're looking to head, is small incremental changes without any huge revenue expenses. But we have to have a direction to head, and that's what I'm providing.
Again, Madam Chair, um, when the project was coming to fruition for the fire station project over here, there wasn't very much discussion about what we were leaving behind. So we have opportunity with space, potentially, you know, space over at Town Hall, um, and I think that that was, you know, a good use of, you know, our resources. I think we were pulling people together, kind of talk about, you know, what can we do here to help support the needs of, of the community? But we never really had that discussion of like, okay, the fire station is moved out, and now we just have bays, and
And the idea is to, you know, figure out the best, the highest possible use with the lowest possible dollar impact for that space, and for finding, um, multiple ways in which we can proceed, and then figuring out what's the best way for all of them, and seeing if it's even feasible, um, seeing if it even makes sense to, you know, reconfigure, rebuild, um, on that site, or if it's, it's just prohibitive, um, and unnecessary. So in order for us to get that, we need detailed drawings and assessments from professionals, and the idea behind that was to do it in this very slow, methodical, low-dollar way in order to initiate that.
Madam Chair, did we, did, wasn't there already a, a study done for refurbishing that?
That's, that's what Andrew had
And what was, what was the cost of that? How did that?
I'd be guessing it was somewhere between twelve and fifteen million, something like that. That was like kind of a, a full renovation of the existing space.
It's just out of, that's out of reach right now.
And that's why this is a smaller
So we can't take that existing plan and have, is that what they're doing, taking that existing plan, this is where this twenty-five thousand comes in to knock it down to make it more feasible?
I would say it's more of a fresh look, and I think what the direction that we've kind of given them is that we're gonna phase it and go incremental.
Piece by piece.
Not a big grand, one, one fix, I guess.
And that's what Andrew was mentioning specifically on the space needs assessment for different employees. When looking over it, it was significantly larger than what we would come up with for numbers, um, and it's from just different times, different methodologies. So, um, it wasn't as relevant, um, to making a small footprint as, as we'd want it.
Madam Chair, the following question. When was that study done?
Twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two?
I think it was done in twenty-two. Maybe it came out in twenty-three.
We don't own that building, right? That's owned by Taunton?
We do own that building.
There's such a mess there. I don't know what
It's, uh, I've, I've heard the, um, the explanation given that it was kind of like given to us in a way that
But we paid for it. So
Yeah.
Because we paid dollar amounts to it, any covenants on it about giving it away are only good for thirty years, and then they expire. So thirty years would have been up in the nineteen eighties at some, is that about right? So it is, in essence, ours. However, if we vacated the building, it's a different consideration if the building was used for non-unucipal purpose. So the answer is muddy.
Yeah, another, I think another part of that study is they, I think they, they thought they were gonna use all the bays in space. Part of the discussion in the committee has been, I don't know how that's possible, um, just with the money we have, so.
Yeah, because it would take that whole thirteen million.
Right.
My second, my follow-up question is, that property is clearly in a flood zone.
Correct.
And the study that was done previously, did they account, do we know if they accounted for that? Because it seems like they may be throwing more money after.
So that building, uh, the last time that building flooded was to do with the blizzard of seventy-eight and water coming in, and then they did the swales out front. So if, there hasn't been any flooding, and any local historians can challenge me and, and tell me I'm wrong, but the, since nineteen seventy-eight, I don't believe there has been flooding at that site. The water has gone up the road, so the flood zone designation, it's Zone A, um, and it strictly, um, it pulls down the ability for us to put, uh, more capacity on the septic, so we couldn't have like a big meeting space there, but it still allows for the amount of people, um, what was the number?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight, yeah.
Thirty-eight people to be working in that building, and not in violation of any type of septic issues.
Is municipal use any type of use for benefit of the town, or is it strictly town business?
Isn't that a good question for a lawyer?
Yeah, so we don't know.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Someone want to make a motion?
Make a motion? No? All right, I'll, uh, make a motion to approve Article Three as written.
A second?
Second.
Dan Costin, aye?
Tanini, aye.
Costin, aye?
Right, aye.
Beal's aye.
Select Board, I'll make a recommendation, um, to approve Article Three as presented.
to approve Article Three as presented.
Seconded.
Motion is second, any further discussion from the board? Hearing none, roll call?
Huh, aye.
Plug I.
Candido, aye? Who's gonna read that for us? I will read the, uh, I will read that, if Paul doesn't want to read it. All right. I'm gonna do what you did. Uh, Article Four.
All right, Article Four, to see if the town will vote to amend the, the town code so as to add a new provision for revolving funds, to establish and authorize revolving funds for use by certain town departments, boards, committees, agencies, or office, officers in accordance with Massachusetts, Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Forty-four, Section Fifty-three E one dash slash two, as set forth below, and to authorize the town clerk to assign such numbering and to make non-substantive changes to the format of this bylaw in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the town code, or take any other action relative thereto. Departmental revolving funds, procedures applicable to all revolving funds, one purpose. By this, this bylaw establishes and authorizes revolving funds for use by town departments, boards, committees, agencies, or officers in connection with the operation of programs or activities that generate fees, charges, or other receipts to support all or some of the expenses of those programs or activities. This bylaw is adopted pursuant to and is governed by General Laws, Chapter Forty-four, Section Fifty-three E one slash two. Two, expenditure, expenditure limitations, a department or agency head, board, committee, or officer may incur liabilities against and spend monies from a revolving fund established and authorized by this bylaw without appropriations subject to the following limitations. A, fringe benefits of full-time employees, whose salaries or wages are paid from the fund shall also be paid from the fund. B, no liability should be incurred in excess of the available balance of the fund. C, the total amount spent during a fiscal year shall not exceed the amount authorized by town meeting on or before July first of that fiscal year, or any increased amount of that auth- authorization that is later approved during that fiscal year by the Select Board and Finance Committee. Interest, interest, three, interest, interest earned on monies credited to a revolving fund established by this bylaw shall be credited to the general fund. Four, procedures and reports, except as provided in General Laws, Chapter Forty-four, Section Fifty-three E one slash two, in this bylaw, the laws, bylaws, rules, regulations, policies, or procedures that govern the receipt and custody of town monies and the expenditure and payment of town funds shall apply to the use of a revolving fund established and authorized by this bylaw. The town accountant shall include a, include a statement on the collections credited to each fund. The encumbrances and expenditures charged to the fund and the balance available for expenditure in the regular report the town accountant provides to the department, board, committee, agency, or officer on appropriations made for its use. Authorized revolving funds, revolving fund, conservation committee, spending authority, conservation, sorry, conservation commission, spending authority, conservation commission, revenue source, administrative fees paid in connection with applications and other services provided by the conservation department. Allowed expenses, professional slash technical consultant services, maintenance of conservation land, purchase of conservation land, enforcement actions for violations of the Wetlands Protection Act, or any future local wetland bylaws. Spending limit, fifteen thousand dollars, sponsored by Select Board.
I'm going to invite Mike Beck.
Thank you. Mike Ellis, Finance Director?
Leave it to the planning board.
Oh, for questions?
Yeah.
Uh, do anyone else have questions?
Um, we may, yeah.
Yeah, well, go ahead, and I do too, go ahead.
Well, go ahead, you start.
Well, basically, can you just kind of high level what this means?
Yeah, so right now, these funds are taken in in the general fund, we use them as a local receipt to help balance the budget. Um, they're subsequently closed to free cash at the end of the fiscal year. If this passes, they will be removed from the general fund and housed in a special revenue fund, a revolving fund, and they will be, uh, voted annually at town meeting with a spending limit, essentially a budget, uh, not to exceed, and the expenses can be directly charged to that fund for the allowable costs listed in the article.
And what is the advantage of, of this based on how we've done in the past?
When you take in general fund revenue throughout the year, it stays general fund revenue until it's certified as free cash, and then voted, this would allow conservation to spend freely throughout the fiscal year, charge expenses directly to the revolving fund.
That was actually a good question.
My follow-up question is, what are the limitations on the definition of administrative fees?
Um, I may have to defer to Nancy on that one.
Come on up. In twenty-twenty-three, we took in about eight thousand dollars, in twenty-twenty-four, it was about six. Um, it depends on the side of, of the project, if we had like Rocky Woods, when we did, did a delineation, it's a dollar a foot, so that year was a bigger amount, but usually between six and eight thousand dollars is what we take in.
So if you had to, um, I appreciate the allowed expenses, it says professional, technical, consultant services, and so forth, would this include legal fees or legal consultants? Or special?
Professional or technical ser- it could.
It could.
It could.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just make one other comment? When I had put this in, I had no idea, we didn't have an avenue to do it, when I had first gone for the revolving fund. That's why that other whole first piece came out, I did not know that our town didn't already have an accommodation to do that. So it turned into a, a bigger deal than I thought.
Yeah, typically when you have a revolving fund, you would have a standing article every year at town meeting that would vote the spending limitations, and we've never had that as far as my research has done, so this would be the first fifty-three E and a half revolving fund.
First one for all of the com- boards, commissions, and committees?
Based off the research I've done, I have not seen anything, um, going back as far as I could research that we've ever had one for any other purpose aside from conservation, so.
That, that would be my question, is where does this, where does this end? Because now, you know, you have other committees, commissions, boards, and, well, hey, wait a minute, hey, wait a minute, next thing we know, we have everybody, you know, jumping store.
Well, we're gonna lose the revenue from the general fund, so, I mean, I think that, we need to make that clear, that even though it's only six thousand, sometimes ten thousand, we're gonna lose that from free cash, from being able to balance the budget, so, yeah, it's gonna be delegated to another fund, so.
Madam Chair, I can, um, just a question through you, Nancy, um, when has there ever been a situation that you had an initiative that you couldn't pursue it because you didn't have any funding?
The problem is, we get a lot of money through the state funding, when somebody puts in an application, they give so much to Satan, so much to the Conservation Commission, but we can only spend it on a very select, small amount of things.
Okay.
For example, like I said, maintenance of the land, like, we have, how many acres up on Pickens Street? That's a mess, you know, um, some of the money for maintenance of the land that we oversee is good. We've talked for years, and with everything happening to Lakeville right now, we've talked to ye- for years about a wetland bylaw. We need somebody to help us write it, I don't think anybody on the commission has that expertise. We've tried before, and you can take a piece from one town, a piece from another town, a piece from another town, that doesn't work. Lakeville has unique resources, we need to protect them, we're having ADUs, forty Bs, everything that's happening, we need to be stronger than the Wetland Protection Act. We need to have additional strengths, and to write that, that technical advice is basically what I was looking for in the beginning, to get somebody to come in and help us write a good wetland bylaw, unique to Lakeville. Lakeville is thirty-three point five percent either wetland or open water, that's a third of our town. I personally, for years, don't think we're doing the best we can do to protect it. That's a small price to pay.
More questions?
I just have, I just wanted to know, but, um, if that was a, a need, then I'm sure through the town administrator's office, you know, trying to identify, you know, ways to either grant or fund, um, you know, that initiative, but I guess I just don't understand where we wouldn't be supporting any of our boards and committees and commissions with an initiative that they have.
Following in on that line of thought. Traditionally, if I'm, if I'm correctly, um, the, the Board of Selectmen would dedicate their Select Board serpent hours to something like this.
Right.
Yeah, and they.
What kind of powers?
Serpent?
Oh.
Hours that they would.
I've talked to Serpent, actually, if, is through you, Madam Chair, about helping us write a bylaw, and they would have to write a snippet grant, they said they don't have that expertise available.
But, but again, it's just. Yeah. Andrew, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I mean, um, I think Mike and I have gone over this a few times, I think the most ideal way we're used to in our history is a free cash article, that's probably the easiest way, because this won't be effective until July one. So the easiest thing is to ask for free cash, do it now, um, and get it done easily, I think we haven't, I think the board, um, directed me to put together a policy on spending. I think eventually the spending policy is gonna include a vote from the commission to authorize any funding come out of this, so like, one way, one way or another, the commission's gonna have to be on board with it, as well as the town, the town meeting vote, so. Um, there's a lot of ways to do that, my personal preference, it's a free cash article, um, but there's a lot of ways to skin a cat, as everyone knows, so, um, it's up to everyone, I guess, though.
Andrew. Madam Chair, um, one other thing, in a wetland bylaw, it would also give us the ability to fine, I think as we all saw through one sixty Bedford Street and everything that we've been through, that none of the boards in town have the ability to fine, we have somebody that comes into our town and is wrecking havoc, and there's not a single thing we can do about it, I mean, we finally got an order of conditions for them over there, but they don't have to follow it. There's not one, any teeth that we have, and it would be.
That's more about the wetland bylaw than it is about the revolving fund.
Right, but I mean, it's part of it, it's all part of it.
Making, you know, the fines count towards the revenue.
Yeah.
I, I understand that.
And, but the fines wouldn't come through this, that would go into the general fund from the way it's written right now.
I'd like to pose a question, actually, to my fellow member, because you work in capacity for another community, and you do have revolving funds.
Yes.
Is there advantages or disadvantages that you see in your professional capacity?
I'd say the biggest advantage I see is, it, it gives the Department of Commission a little bit more flexibility. Um, I have personally seen revolving funds be abused a little bit, especially with year-end closing and unpaid bills, you know, they'll, they'll pay them with the revolving fund instead of sending them to town meeting, I've, I've seen that used before in that way.
Okay. Um, I'm just gonna make one additional comment, and I believe I copied all of you on an email a couple of months ago. I practice in a real estate, and I'm a mortgage lender, I had a member of resident here from Lakeville that was buying a property in Easton, and I got the order of conditions from the planning board that were imposed upon this three-unit development subdivision, okay, it's not a real subdivision, it's a three-unit private way subdivision, and the order of conditions written by that Conservation Commission makes us look like we do not know what we're doing, I'm just leveling with you, we have got to start playing serious ball with what's going on here in this community, because if we don't start protecting ourselves, we're gonna end up with pollu- more pollution, more groundwater problems, all kinds of wetland violations and all this kind of stuff, and I, I don't know if this is quite the right answer, but I, I really think the importance of supporting our Conservation Commission, we have to up our game a little bit here in town. That's my two cents.
I, I don't see why it's just not a, a free cash issue, we, we pretty much move money when they need it quickly, so I'm just, I leave, I just always lean back, I'm not speaking ill of anybody, it may never happen, it's just, to me, it looks like it's an opening for misuse or or other issues down the road, I, I don't see the problem, we've, we, anytime there's been a need for something, we've called a meeting, special or otherwise, and asked if you knew from free cash. I can't, I can't think of any that's been said no since I've been with FinCom, you've been here longer than I have. I don't think there's ever been any, so, I, I don't see a need for revolving funds, that's just.
I, I would say, so this, to me, sounds like an administrative thing to make things easier, I just think it does open up the door to have is, is this, is this something we want across all the committees, right, because once we do it for one, um, I would think everyone would want that, so, just something to consider.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? No?
What was your motivation for doing, for proposing this, this was, this was sponsored by the Select Board, but Conservation came and asked for this, right?
Yes, but initially, it was to get someone, because we didn't have any money to help us write a wetland bylaw, and that hasn't been, because thirty-three and a half percent is wetland or open water, it's not been really popular, it's been to town meeting twice, and that's not passed, so, um, I think that we needed professional help with getting it right. Um, and then I, when I looked at other towns and people that have done it, that, um, it's a little bit of money to upkeep the land that we oversee also, so I thought, oh, that's another good small thing, we can't keep running back all the time, it's not a large amount of money. In fact, I had originally said, like, uh, instead of the fifteen, I had originally said ten, um, and any money that we don't, it's voted on every year, you'd have to vote to approve every year a spending limit, and it just seems like such a little amount of money that would free us up to do a few other things instead of running back, I can't be running back every time for smaller things, so I guess the answer to your question is yes.
George, I have.
Just coming up with a question. Any other questions?
Would you like to, you'd like to speak? I'll get it up.
Robert Kivicky, Fuller Shore Road, uh, you talk about protecting the water, and come up with some ideas these developments coming in, even if, I think, misuse, talk about maybe two or three uh, units into a small ear, and Nancy talked about protecting the groundwater. Why, why can't we pass a bylaw that these developments have a tight tank? Like, we have to, on the pond, have a tight tank, okay, so the water is controlled, and I believe the government is all for this, okay, and, uh.
So I appreciate your, your sentiments, but we're actually just voting on the revolving fund for, for this right now?
Okay, well, okay.
But I understa- I, I understand your, your connection with, you know, trying to shore up some of our wetland bylaws, but for this article, we're just vote, voting on the revolving fund portion of it, and not the wetlands bylaw.
All right, there you go.
Thank you.
Can I just pose one more?
You absolutely can pose one more thing.
Is that anybody else that wants to do this has to come and go through the whole town meeting process, it's not like just everybody can jump on board and say, yeah, we're gonna do this, and then they'd have to show every year what their bottom line was.
Does not having this ability impair your ability to have enforcement? In other words, there's a speed of enforcement, right, I need something, I need it right now, I don't have time to wait till next Thursday for a meeting to ask for money, or would you just simply?
It would be in the wetland bylaw that we will, we would propose includes the enforcement. I don't think you can just, I might be wrong, but I don't think we can just come up with, okay, we're gonna pass a law that we're gonna be able to do enforcement, otherwise, I think maybe Select Board would have done that.
This is about the revolving.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't, I was here, revolving has anything to do with enforcement, it's a whole different.
It would be funded, it's, is where.
Understood, but that would be the necessity for having to have the, the, the board.
Correct.
The ability to spend the money.
Especially seeing as she's pulling in, or the board is pulling in, eight thousand a year, and, and, you know, just a spending limit of fifteen is more than double what that would be pulling, so it would put us in a significant deficit for something of that level, and then, you know, to whoever's point there, yes, it does open it up for all the other boards, committees, and commissions, um, as well, to parity.
So, I guess I'm not understanding, were bringing this forward because it was supposed to go in tandem with the bylaw, a different bylaw conversation?
I will.
Is that you, or just?
We don't have a bylaw.
Okay.
A local bylaw, I mean, we have the Wetland Protection Act, but that doesn't always, that's not giving us the protection we need.
Yeah. Any else, questions for anyone?
Anyone else? Someone want to make a motion? Anybody?
I'll make a motion to approve this to the, to the town meeting.
Second. Okay. Obviously.
Oh, Nankowski, aye?
Tanini, aye.
Costin, aye.
Roy, aye. Oh, crap.
This is where the robots surround?
Yeah, you know what, let's, to get it to the town meeting, I'll, I'll say yes.
Select Board, any more questions?
Just for clarification, that vote was for you to recommend.
To recommend, yep. To recommend, yep.
I'll make a motion not to recommend, um, approval of Article, what is it, four?
Four. Do I have a second?
Madam Chair, may I clarify something for the Finance Committee?
Sure.
Please do.
Um, you don't need to vote to approve this to get it to town meeting.
No, I know.
Okay, that's what you said.
After I said that, I, I realized what I said.
You cannot recommend approval, and it will still go to-
It still goes to town meeting.
It's gonna go to town, yeah.
Recommended by, you would say-
Is it too late to change? I misspoke when I was trying to-
You may amend the record.
May I amend the record? Sorry. No, I, I, no, I, I misspoke. I meant to say no. I apologize. I meant to say no. Finance Committee does not recommend. I apologize.
Okay, so that changes the vote?
Yeah.
Is your vote changed?
My vote changed. I misspoke. I apologize. Thank you, thank you.
Oh, I so wanna read these minutes.
So I'm more in peace. Thank you. All right, I have a motion. On the floor, do I have a second for nay? Purposes of discussion, I will second the nay. Any discussion on the nay vote? Roll call.
So my nay would be a nay on the nay vote? Is that-
So it's nay-nay?
Yeah, that's it, yeah. I, I vote to not support the nay vote, so I don't know.
So, your, your vote on nay is nay?
My vote on nay is nay.
Member Plonka?
Plonka, nay.
Candido, I.
Carboni, I.
Fails with a split. So, no recommendation with the fail.
Madam Chair, excuse myself, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for making us your first stop today. We will move on to Article Five. May the petitioner come and sit at the microphone. Oh, I'm sorry, did you, Nancy, will you be speaking to this, or is this a select board speaking to it? Because they actually technically sponsored it, because the Conservation Commission did not get it in, in time with a vote.
Yeah, not on time, but, yeah.
So it is technically the Select Board sponsoring it?
Right.
Uh, who would like to speak to this motion from the Select Board of Four?
Are we back?
Back, we're, we went backwards to four, because I was going to read it.
So we're not, we're not here, we're back, we're back on four?
We're back on four, just to know who's gonna read it. We just wanna know, who's gonna read four?
I will read four.
All right. Thank you. And now we are to five.
Article Five. To see if the town will vote notwithstanding Chapter Thirty-two B of the General Laws or any other general or special law to the contrary, part-time elected officials in the town of Lakeville, who receive a salary or stipend, shall not be eligible for participation in the town's contribu-, contributory health and life insurance benefit plan, effective three-one-twenty-six. Citizen's petition.
Uh, we'd like to hear from the citizen, and just, if you could just summarize.
Sure. And I also wanna thank you for, six months ago, spending that time with me, that special meeting was much appreciated. Um, so yeah, I'm pretty much the author of this. I did ask Rich to help me with this. Um, as the warrant reads, it's basically, um, to allow, to, to not allow part-time elected officials to receive any town full-time, full-time town benefits. Um, we also put an end date on it of March, because I think it should be done sooner than later. Um, I'll tell you how this all started for me quickly, is that, um, I've lived here twenty-six years. I've served on the Parks Commission, presently I'm the Chair of the Capital Expenditures Committee. I don't know if Katie's gonna keep me on there, that's up to you. And, um, I've really spent a lot of time with the, uh, town employees during the years to understand how the government works, how our budget works. And, you know, last year, the town was under pressure to find some expenses to cut, maybe find some revenue. And so I understand what they were going through, so I've, I've created and managed budgets from three to seventy million dollars. So I said, you know what, maybe I can help and take a look at it. I was told at some point, could have been last year, or this year, that the, um, Select Board receives, uh, or is offered full-time insurance benefits. So I said, well, that's interesting, just let me see how much that costs. So I went and looked at the budget, and I looked for it, but I did not see it in the budget. So I went back, talked to Mike Gold, the town manager. I said, listen, I don't see these benefits posted anywhere. And they said, well, um, it's in the employee benefit line. And my thought immediately was, well, they're not employees of the town, so why would it be there? But, we'll go further with that. Then I was told, well, it's just not the Select Board who are offered full-time benefits, it's the assessors and the Health Board. So now we're, we've gone from five to eleven people. And so I, I said, well, where are the costs? So I looked at the costs, and I was kinda taken aback at, at what we are offering to them. Just to go back, this has been happening for decades. The Select Board did not vote for this for themselves. They kind of adopted it, or, um, but it's been going on for years. I, for the town meeting, I have all that history. I also did a survey of a hundred and seventeen towns to see if this is normal. But I'm basically gonna just talk about the numbers right now. Um, so, let's look at the costs. Right now, we have three Select Board members who are receiving a five thousand dollar buyout. A five thousand dollar buyout is an offer from the town to save money, that if you take, if you take five thousand from us, then you're gonna save us money from not taking the insurance, which I think hap-, it, that's what happens to our town employees. They're offered that. And so, of course, my head hits me again, and I go, well, as a part-time elected official, we pretty much have full-time jobs and have insurance offered to us. So why are we going to the town to ask for insurance? Um, let's go to the Health Board. The Health Board, we have two people who receive the five thousand buyout, and one receives the insurance. The assessors, we have two people who receive the insurance, one who receives the buyout. Now, the cost, just so everybody knows, is that we have three people on the family plan, at a cost of twenty-three thousand dollars per person. That's what it costs the town to, to, to supply that for us. Uh, so, if you look at what was presented at the town meeting, you notice that correctly, the stipends were forty thousand. But that wasn't really the correct figure. The correct figure of compensation for these eleven, uh, board members is a hundred and fifty thousand. So, once again, I'm wondering, well, why aren't, why isn't the town voting on this every year? Because it is a budget item. Uh, being as a part-time elected official, I never thought myself as an employee. And my other question was immediately was, why is it that, um, these eleven commissioners are receiving this, but why aren't the other forty commissioners offered this? So there is a disparity there. We have eleven people who are being offered, who are getting a stipend and being offered, um, the insurance, but there's forty who weren't. So, that's another thing I didn't understand. Well, I do understand that if we did that, the town would go broke, to have an extra fifty people on the, on the rolls. So that I understand. Uh, let's just go one step further to get, I think, the thing that spun my head, is, um, I apologize. I decided to do a ten-year budget on this, meaning I took- I'm sorry. I took the present rate of twenty-two thousand a year, and I increased it eight percent a year, which is pretty conservative in insurance, as you know. It could go up twelve percent, fourteen percent. But what I really wanted to do was come out to the best possible scenario, that if all ten took the insurance, which could happen, at an eight, eight percent increase over ten years, the cost of the town would be three million seven hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. Over ten years, ten people get it, at a rate of an eight percent increase a year. If we do it at twelve percent, that number is four million seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So, I mean, the idea of this warrant is to let's have the town decide whether that is okay, or we have better use for that money. Um, so, there are concerns that, my immediate concern is this hasn't really been addressed in years, okay? These figures, uh, have never been presented at town meeting, the way that, the way that, the way that I'm doing it. Now, you're gonna mention it was in two thousand eighteen.
I'm gonna mention the fact that it was in two thousand eighteen, and the figures, as you're saying them, are your figures and not-
No, they're the town figures.
No, not the eight percent and that twelve percent increase year over year, that's-
No, he's just, he's using that as an example.
Yes.
Yes, that's an example.
So you're, you're right in that, that no eight percent or twelve percent increase-
No, 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 you're, you're, you're a hundred percent correct.
Yep.
But I'm just doing to see what, how it's gonna affect the town in the future.
Absolutely.
That's all. And I, listen, I, I know you guys, you work very, very hard. You're very committed to the town, so the issue isn't that I don't think you deserve anything. I just think that this town can't afford going forward, because, as you know, this debt exclusion's gonna do something horrific to this town, whether it raises the taxes, or, or, Mike, what, what would the cost of the budget be every year if we don't use a debt exclusion? A million and a half, a million that we have to take out of the budget? And then we have the fire station, which, you know, was, we, we definitely need, so, things are going up, cost of living and everything's going up. So, I'm just, when I looked at the budget, I just wanted to say, we need to either allow this, let the town to say, okay, I'm good with it, then I'm good with it. Or to say, no, that's, that's not gonna work for me. And the other reason I'm doing this is that I think any compensation to any part-time elected officials has to be approved every year in the budget. It has to be taken out of employees. It can't be put in the employees, because we're not employees as a town. Stipends, great, they should receive the stipends. But if in the near future, they decide, well, I think we should get this back, well, great. Present it as, uh, in the town budget, and let the town decide whether we should be doing this. Um, so, yeah, I mean, I, I'm glad I did it, and I think, you know, I, I'm guessing that, um, that there may be some, you know, feedback on this. I, people have been talking to me, asking questions. I said, listen, I'm gonna bring everything to town meeting. If you wanna discuss with the board, or the health, the Select Board, or the Health, or Assessors, ask them why they take it or whatever, that's great. But, this is what this petition is about. And the reason that there's an end date on there is because I think it's fair, some people may not think it's fair, because they'll say, well, they got families, you know, they're gonna have to get the insurance. But, um, Mike or Andrew, might correct in saying that if a full-time employee of ten years gets laid off, that they're only offered thirty days of insurance and get Cobra? Yes. So, we got full-time employees who only get thirty days. I'm offering a hundred and twenty days. So I think that's very fair. And then going forward, we just start from scratch again. If anybody at the Select Board or town decides that they want to get any more compensation, present it to the town, and then I think we're good.
Mr. Cameron, do you have something that you'd like to add?
Yeah, I do. Uh, um, just a few things that, um, first of all, this only affects the part-time Board of Selectmen, the part-time Board of Health, and the part-time Board of Assessors. So, the problem that I have is, is that I know that, some of you have this problem already, is that if you don't take the insurance, you get up to a five thousand dollar bonus. And I just don't think that's right, you know, to do that. And I know the employees get it, but that's caused a lot of problems, you know, within the budget too, that, you know, if you take, if you don't take the insurance, you get a five, up to a five thousand dollar bonus, depending upon whether you take the family plan, or you do a single plan, or whatever. The problem is, is that the cost of health insurance has gone through the roof. And, you know, knowing nothing about their jobs, or what they're doing, and so forth, they have the opportunity to get health insurance somewhere else besides the town. What also is upsetting to me is that we have thirty-nine part-time employees. And those thirty-nine part-time employees work up to nineteen hours a week. And unless you work twenty hours a week, you're not entitled to the insurance. So that's a lot of part-time people. That doesn't seem right to me either. That shouldn't be, it's fair to do that. But, you know, I don't know, and I don't wanna be a hundred percent sure, but I can tell you that all the communities around us do not provide health insurance to any of the part-time people. So I don't think, you know, a lot of them had it, but they eliminated it because of the cost, you know, of what, what health insurance is today compared to what it was before. So, you know, both of these committees know, that you got a tough budget coming up this year, really tough budget, you know, and we know that you got a health insurance issue, you have to move to another company, because they're dropping, I don't want to say dropping, it's being discontinued, you know, as of January first. So you're gonna go and go to another company, it's gonna cost you a lot of money. And based upon the environment that's going on right now, I know you say, well, it's only eight percent or whatever. I'm pretty confident it's gonna go up ten percent this year. So if you take that ten percent, and the town is spending two-point-four million dollars on health insurance for the employees and these part-time officials, you know, you can take that money and use it to reduce that cost, you know, for the town and the town's budget. I mean, the other thing you gotta look at is that, you know, I know you don't like it or not, but there may be a general override coming, you know, in the spring. I mean, the town administrator presented a budget that is at least seven hundred thousand dollars in a deficit right now. And ba-, based upon what's going on at state level and at federal level, we don't get a lot of federal money, then, you know, that's gonna be an issue. So if you look at it from that perspective, and you say, okay, I could save two firefighters, or two police officers, or pay for the, uh, the, uh, health insurance costs, that's a lot of money, you know, to do that. So, um, this has nothing to do with the individual board members, and so forth and so on. This is a fiscal item that should have been addressed a long time ago, and it wasn't. So.
Any questions?
I do. When you presented it six months ago, I, I made the same statement, so I'm, I'm gonna make it again, so you can answer it on the record here. I, I, I don't see an issue with trying to find some ways to cut the expenses on health insurance. And special town employees, elected officials, special town employees, are, are, are still employees. Um, but I don't, I agree, if you're part-time, you don't necessarily need to have the insurance. I definitely didn't like the stipend, I agree. Um, and however this should fall, um, I could get more behind it, I guess you could say. People took a position, whether it was elected or appointed, or whatever it may be, um, with the understanding they had this benefit. If we're gonna end that benefit, it should end at their term. Not, not end on a date of, random date of March first. They, they, they ran, they were elected, they were put into a position, they knew this, they were counting on that insurance. If they're here for three years, we own that for three years. We made a commitment. If you go back on your commitment, you're gonna end up with a whole bunch of people not running again.
If you go back on your commitment, you're gonna end up with a whole bunch of people not running again.
Okay, well, what do you say to the other forty-five people who don't get it?
We have to make a decision.
Well, that's a decision, but my point is, I, I'm sorry, there's no contract with.
So this isn't a, a debate back and forth?
No, 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 listen, I, I, I understand what he's saying, though, but to me, there is no contract, 'cause they aren't employees. And if you really need to, if you need the insurance, and you need the stipen, to run, I mean, to be a part of a committee, then you, you really shouldn't do that, okay? Because, because, just, this, as, as the select board knows, we, we serve at the privilege of the people who do this, okay? It's our civic duty. Now, just so that you know, there are other towns who did cut it midway. Because, the way you wanna do it at the end of the terms, that's still gonna leave us open to the five thousand buyout. It's not fair to the people who are, who don't take it, because then they may say, you know what, they take it, I'm gonna take it for the rest of the year. Do you see how convoluted that that could be?
Well, that isn't what I said, though. What I said was, they should be able to keep their insurance. I disagree with the buyout, you can end the buyout tomorrow, I don't care. End that all you want. I disagree with the buyout. I, I think if somebody has insurance currently, they took the position, they, they were offered the insurance. FinCom was offered the insurance many years ago, Rich will probably speak to this, and they thought that, and I was told they turned it down as, as a practice.
I was offered it when I was on FinCom.
Yes. Okay, I, I, and, and as a practice, they have turned it down. And, all I'm saying is, is that you wanted in that stipen tomorrow, I'm, I'm behind you, I'll, I'll carry you on my shoulders, right up to the, to the town meeting. It, it's ending someone's insurance, current health insurance, immediately, or on a specific date, I disagree with. Carry it through the rest of their term, I think you'll have a better response, is all.
Do, do you?
I agree with your premise.
No, 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 and this, once again, you're right, I, I don't, this isn't about the stipends. But, I think my example about an employee who took a job with the promise of insurance, gets their job taken away, now has to pay a full rate.
So you're saying the, the, the elected official would not be an elected official anymore? If you're making equivalencies, if it should line up.
We're not laying them off, we're not laying people off over this, we're saying is that they're, while they're in, in, in their position, they get the insurance. If they lose their position for whatever reason, a recall election, or they don't win again, then they don't get their insurance.
But my.
It's just simple.
But, but my point of the whole thing is just to correct a wrong, because if we continue to have those three people do it, say they're on there for all three years, what's the cost?
For health insurance, or for the stipen?
No, what is the cost gonna be? Twenty, thirty, it's gonna be another, it's gonna be another a hundred and two, two, two fifty, three hundred thousand dollars over those years.
I have some more people that would like to speak, and I'd like to give them the opportunity.
Oh, I'm sorry, but, you know what?
That was my question.
No, thank you, I, I just think this will be debated at a town meeting.
Yeah, I agree, I just, that's my question.
Yeah, and anything will be talked about.
I just wanna make, uh, one point. You know, the, the stipends, they get paid, the board of health gets paid a hundred and dollars each, and two thousand dollars for the chairman. The, um, board of appeal, board of assessors get paid fifteen hundred dollars, and I think it's twenty-five hundred dollars.
Two thousand.
So, I would hope these people didn't run to get the insurance. You know, why, why would you say, I don't see you saying something like that. But, you know, it, it was completely different a number of years ago, when the health insurance, I don't say was cheap, but it was much cheaper than it is now. It immediately skyrocketed, you know, I don't know why it's gone up, you know, overall, but. I don't think that makes any logic, that because they have a stipen, and they will continue to have those stipends, that they should be entitled to health insurance until their, uh, uh, their time is up. I, I don't think that's right, like.
I'm gonna acknowledge, uh, a new person to come to the table, if one of you gentlemen will.
Yeah.
Move over.
We'll sit here, please.
Yeah, it's a lot of information, it's a little confusing, and, uh.
Identify yourself for the record, please.
Oh, yeah, Robert Kivicky, twenty-four, full assurance. I, I was just, uh, this young man here with the glasses talking about, you know, we have to give him.
I like this guy.
We have.
Well, you're in trouble.
He's kind of a favorite citizen.
Just got schooled.
You know, we have to, we have to give him, we have to give him, um, the stipen or the insurance, I think that's what I understood. And I agree with you to, to a point. But then it gets to the point where the town doesn't have to, uh, doesn't have enough money. Especially when tonight it was brought up that we might have to have a two and a half override, okay? And it's kinda scary, so at that point in time, bang, we can't give you any insurance, okay? Um, but, my question is, is the board, if one of yous wanna just, you know, I love you people, I understand all the hard work you do, and I always promote everybody to, um, to respect, my kids to respect the board of selectmen, and all the boards, because they're very important. But I guess my question is, do you feel that you should get that? And if that's the case, that will help me, but, make a decision.
I'll let any board member, um, speak, and then I'll, I'll happily answer.
Well, I'm, I'm happy with the, um, when the term is up, and then any newly elected officials, there's, it's not offered.
Madam Chair. Mr. Constant, may, if you wish, is based on the wording of this, if you wish to amend from the floor, you could make an amendment to re, to replace effective three-one-twenty-six to be at the end of their elected term. So that would be within allowed, within the bounds of the, um, article, so.
So even if a citizen's petition can be amended?
Uh, citizen, anybody can amend, so as a citizen of the town, as not a member of the finance committee, but as a citizen of the town, they could make that amendment, because it's a distinction. As I referred before, we did make amendments from the floor to a citizen's petition to go from a three to a five-person board. We made refinements, this is the type of refinement that you could make. You're not changing material, what's proposed, you're just changing the term.
Okay, thank you. So, just a quick question on that, is that if, if, so the people, if, if we do it, just say that says, all right, we'll do it at the end of the term, what happens to, so that may be three years, what happens to the people who don't have the insurance, and still get to five for three years, because that's part of the plan, correct? They, they, they don't voluntarily have to give it up, if someone's offered insurance, then the way we followed is that if you don't take the insurance, you get five grand, unless they say, I'm gonna give it up, correct? But there's no, there's no legal, no, there's no bylaw or anything that says that, that they have to give it up. So, when we keep that open for three years, that's gonna still leave open for people to collect the five thousand dollars.
That is true.
Except for amending the article to say that, you know, health insurance will be carried through the end of their term, however stipends would end on.
Well, this isn't proposing to change the stipends, this is only for health and life insurance benefit plan.
I'm not talking about the stipen for a salary, I'm talking about the five thousand dollar credit, the buyout. Right, that's what I'm talking about. Can, can we change that to end the buyout immediately, but keep, keep the hea- health insurance off?
I would say that's materially changed.
That's material change, that's. That's all I was asking.
Yes, yeah.
So, you've answered all my questions.
I answered that question, you can't do that, you can't discriminate against the boards. Because the other employees are getting it, and they would be entitled to it too. So you either take it away, or.
Yeah, that, that was the question I originally asked way back when.
Right, you can't take that part away, you could only do it at the, you could either make an effective date.
Or carry it through.
Or carry it to the end of their term.
That was my question.
Or to, to really, if you were really gonna do it, you would say, either everyone gets it, or nobody gets it. I mean, so how can you justify the planning board, finance committee, conservation committee, parks committee, not getting it, but these three committees got it?
The reason, the reason why clarification, Mike, is because these boards get a stipen. The other boards do not get stipens, so they're not entitled to the, to the health insurance.
Yes, uh, the boards, at least, the, the other boards.
All the other boards.
Yes.
Those ones that get paid.
Yes, no, I understand. But this is just a cut and dry for me, I don't wanna convolute it.
I'm gonna let you stop you right there, so Mr. Kivicky can.
Okay. Sorry, sir. All right, yeah.
And there was a conversation going here?
No, I'm in support with Mr. Constant, um, that, you know, any newly elected officials, or any, um, you know, new terms, you know, start without the insurance, so.
Same.
Okay, I wanna give you everything, right? Because, you know, all the hard work, I, you, that you people do, and a lot of people don't realize. I guess my question again to you is, do you feel that the board should have this, um, stipen or insurance?
So, I'll, I'll just answer for myself, obviously.
Yeah.
I, I think it's a, it's a good have to have, and it, it, it helps, you know, differentiate childcare costs for some people that are, like, single parents, and they're using that for, for babysitting, or, or some other things. And the health insurance, I'm sure, has been a godsend for some people that maybe didn't qualify under other plans, or had some financial hardships. I think it would be a difficult, uh, decision for me to take someone's healthcare away. I don't think I could feel very good about that, but I could feel really good about saying at the end of your term, that's it. That it's, you're not eligible again, um, you know, at the end of the term, there's no new people coming on, and the attrition and the falloff happens in a more organic way, um, in, as opposed to like a, like a date that's been set. But I am in favor of it.
That's great, I mean, I think most of the discussion, obviously, will be at town meeting. I just think, um, this is a very small town, you know that, right?
I agree, and I wanna give, uh, Miss Fabian. When you're standing up there patiently.
I'm standing up here patiently. Mr. Smith, still a camera. So, this discussion tonight is whether the select board should move the article forward to town meeting. Um, it puts the select board in a very difficult situation, because if you don't move it forward, the optics are bad for you, because people will say, well, that's 'cause they want the benefit.
So it's moving forward regardless of us, we, it's if you support it.
Okay, if you support it. So anyways, my big issue right now is the lack of correct information that's been provided by the petitioners, sorry, Mike.
No, please, too.
So, I didn't hear anywhere where you addressed the percentages that the employees are required to pay towards their, their own insurance.
Mm-hmm.
So, I was an elected official, starting in two thousand fifteen, I was grandfathered into a seventy-five, twenty-five split. So if I had taken the insurance, the town would've paid seventy-five percent, I would've paid twenty-five percent. For the record, and because in the last two days, I've heard from four people that I took the insurance, I never took the insurance, I took the buyout. And I feel like I earned that buyout. So, which is something that I will say on town floor. However, there are other employees who, for a while, the split was fifty-fifty. So whatever the total cost was, whether you were an individual, that, do you know those numbers, Andrew?
Sixty-five, thirty-five.
Okay, so it's sixty-five, thirty-five now, so I think.
But you were grandfathered at seventy-five, twenty-five still.
But that.
Two.
That's two. And no one else. No one else will be at seventy-five, twenty-five, because that was done away with in two thousand seventeen. So, now it's sixty-five, thirty-five. So I think that's something that's important for people to know. I also think it's important for people to know that the state does consider us employees, because we are also required, it is mandatory to pay OBR, which is a forced retirement savings. So why does the state force me to pay that? Which, I had to address the retirement savings that I had, um, to transfer it into my own type of retirement when I was done being a select board member. How can they force me to do that if I'm not considered? If the law says part-time employees have to pay OBR, then obviously the state, and you know what? If other communities have done away with it, that's great, I understand the budget concerns. But my hope is that someone should have the accurate information that night. And I'll be prepared that night to speak to how it came about, why it came about, and why those particular three boards, um, receive it, which is, you know, a whole other.
Which I will bring up too.
Okay.
Uh, in my research, but, just to.
I know, I don't wanna have a debate.
No, 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 that's, that's fine, but, but I just don't.
But, you know, I don't know.
Someone's in it's incorrect information, when it's not.
I don't know whose responsibility it is to provide the accurate information for it, but I certainly don't want people out there thinking the town is paying one hundred percent of an elected official's, you know. And, it's not twenty thousand dollars for an individual, an individual is less.
It's three families that's on there now, it's twenty-two thousand dollars.
I don't wanna have a debate, I just want to be sure.
Don't say there's misinformation when it's not.
There is.
Like you are allowed to say what you're willing.
Mike, you didn't even mention that there was a split. You couldn't, people could infer the town is paying one hundred percent of some, of an elected official's insurance, is that accurate?
No, it's seven, two people are getting seventy-five, twenty-five. At a cost of twenty-two thousand a year.
Okay. We're gonna end the discussion.
Anyway, we'll, we'll discuss this.
But that is my.
You're out of order.
My, my hope is that, I don't know who's responsible. So if the town is gonna take the select board, the town administrator's office is gonna take zero responsibility to provide the accurate information of what the breakdown is, the actual cost for a single plan, a family plan, um, then I will take it upon myself to provide that accurate information that night, but.
I will be happy to work with Andrew and Lacy on that, and provide it out as a factual statement. Uh, not only what is currently being paid, but what has been historically being paid as well.
And in addition, the five thousand dollar buyout is a completely different conversation. Completely different conversation. It was done not even as long ago, and.
Order, order, please.
Um, you know, again, with that, you know, what, right, I thought we had one. What folks don't, you know, what we know has, having been a select board member, is that that buyout has actually gained us some really great employees and department heads, as a benefit, as whatever. So there's a whole lot more information than, than, you know, has been mentioned.
Thank you.
Mike, sorry.
We're gonna have this debate.
We will have this debate.
That's on the town meeting floor.
It'll be on the town.
Say one more thing, Madam Chair.
You may say one more thing.
You notice in the petition, it talked about thirty-two B? So, town council, uh, had the Junas previously. And thirty-two B implies the health insurance for the town, whether it's an employee or an elected official. So you can't discriminate against anybody, everybody has to be treated the exact same way. So that's why it's being eliminated, and that includes the five thousand dollars, okay? You just can't say, well, they're gonna get the five thousand dollars, stop stipen, but we're gonna eliminate the health insurance, you can't do that. It's not allowed. And, and maybe Andrew could back me up or not, but, you know, you should talk to town council, because I don't know as far as there, no way you can do that.
So, um, I know that we have talked to town council on that, um, and there's, uh, there's a, two different opinions on town council, but if you wanted a.
Yeah, the, the opinion I've, I've heard is what, which just kinda said to us, so, yeah.
Yeah, um, and then there's another point, just for clarification. For the benefit plan to end on three-one-twenty-six, premiums are paid in July of every year. So you're not changing anything by three-one-twenty-six.
The premiums are paid monthly, what that does is it gives the employee until April first to switch to health insurance, it's paid a month, it's paid a month in advance.
It's, but it's paid bulk in July and then, I believe there's a large portion that's paid in July and then monthly, I might be wrong.
Yeah, but the, the, these board members pay monthly their premium, that's what I thought I understood.
Madam Chair, just, I'll just throw that out there, I mean, we have budgeted for this through this fiscal year, and technically, right, like, we have, even though it was combined. So, maybe that's a compromise, I don't know where this is all gonna fall out, but it's been budgeted through the end of this fiscal year.
And I think that would be something that could be amended on town for, because of the, it's a, a term.
Right, exactly, it falls under the same.
So there are opportunities, but I believe, um, Ms. Fabian's statement about just getting, um, town numbers together, um, to just make sure we're all on the same page, uh, would be an important one for the educational component of this article. Because the questions will be asked. Yes, yes, and we should have as much answers as we can, the only one I ca- The only one I can't answer is when this originated. Can't find it anywhere. It was...
It goes way back.
Yeah, it was a very long time ago, um, so I can't find the original intent. Yeah, you got it. She's got, she's got it hidden somewhere. All right, so...
I'm good about it.
I'm gonna wrap this item up and we're going to allow for...
Just a reminder, we're voting on the article as written.
Yes.
Not tweaking, no tweaks, just as written.
As written and then whoever, but this citizen can change.
Correct. Would you like to...
I'll make a motion to approve Article Five as written, or recommend to, uh, for approval, uh, Article Five as written.
Second. Ten-eighths, I.
Cost ninety-nine.
Right, I. Beels eye.
Select board.
Any further comments from the select board?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion not to recommend support of Article Five as written.
Do I have a second?
Let me think about that, you know. Um, yeah, I, I will second that because I...
Second for discussion, or?
Yeah, 'cause I, I agree with Mr. Costance's argument that an elected official, a person who's elected, knowing that they have this benefit. Uh, I understand that, yes, it could be amended on, on the floor.
It will be. Well, it'll be requested.
But as it is right now.
As it is now.
But, but I, as it's written, right, I, I will second that.
All right, I have a motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Uh, just a point, just wanna point out that, uh, Slarkman Hunt is a retired employee and this doesn't, this doesn't apply to him.
Right.
Yes, as it didn't apply to you when you were on because of, I thought you had the, the, I thought it didn't, you couldn't, I don't wanna talk about personal, but I didn't think you were eligible for the stipend because, I didn't think you were eligible for the stipend back.
I don't know what you're talking about.
She thought that you were...
Because of the retirement from, from your wife from the school system?
No, I never took the health insurance from the town and you shouldn't be asking me that question.
And that's why I said I didn't, no, I didn't ask your health, I didn't ask about the health insurance. I asked about the stipend.
The stipend, yeah.
Oh, the buyout, I'm sorry.
No, we never had the buyout when I was on the board for the nine years in a row that I was on. For the last, for the three years I was on, I never took it. Wasn't I entitled to it? I don't know.
Continuing, Ma.
Well, I don't, I don't know if I'm gonna discuss myself or not. Um, I'm, I'm at a quandary for a, a number of different points on this. Um, also having been somebody who has been removed from the town insurance roles due to a layoff and had to pay their own insurance, I don't think that it's fair to, uh, have such a quick cutoff. And that's probably where I'm gonna leave this now.
Very good. Do we have a vote? On the motion?
So, so...
The motion is just recommend, the vote.
The recommendation is, is not to support this.
As written. As written.
So... Again, with the nay-nay, um... So, nay.
So, you don't support the vote to not recommend?
I believe this should go to town meeting floor as it is written.
Yeah.
We're just voting on whether we support as written.
It'll go to town meeting floor regardless.
Yeah, I'm gonna abstain from this.
Buckeye.
Candido, aye. Carboni, aye. Um, and again, it hinges on the date for me.
Same with me, correct?
All right, and that...
All set? Thank you, everyone.
It was a good time had by all. Um, does anyone wanna take a break? Everyone good? Do you have anything else on the agenda?
Are we involved with the meals tax adoption, or?
I think they should be.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I would love them to...
Then we will be here.
Give some opinion. All right, so, uh, now we can cross off Article Number One off the agenda.
Actually, can we move Article Five to Article One at town meeting, please?
Let, let us...
Someone should do it.
Let us go to, where is the tax? What number was tax?
Right.
One, two, three. Vote related to meals tax adoption. Um, thank you for the, for the finance committee for hanging out with us a little bit longer. Um, we've discussed this, um, multiple times throughout the years. First time I remember, the conversation was probably around two thousand thirteen. It didn't pass at town meeting in two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen. Um, and the reason stated by many members was other towns didn't have it and we would be at a competitive disadvantage having the tax. So, that was one of the reasons cited, uh, at town meeting. Um, things have changed drastically in the landscape of the surrounding towns and we're one of the holdouts at this point. Um, it's something towns usually adopt as a matter of, um, effect is, it's just, it's been done all over the state for the last fifteen, twenty years. Um, with that, I will let Andrew present and have a conversation about his vision of it and how we can have a good conversation about it.
Yeah, I'll give a brief, um, overview, then I'll turn it over to Emily. Emily did the lion's share of the work on this one. Um, basically, when I first came in, obviously, there's budget issues here. Um, select board, I think in my interview, said that they're looking for revenue streams. This is, uh, one of the easy checks in the box, I guess, from a town administration, um, level. Um, I shouldn't say necessarily easy, but just something that most communities do. Most, I think every community I've ever worked in has had it and it's just, it's kinda taken for granted that we had it. Um, and so I looked at Lakeville as a community that has a lot more dining establishments than you would think. I think probably a lot more than a lot of these communities on this list, um...
And I think that's because of what people consider dining.
Yeah, right.
Now, dining for the purposes of this is those gas station sandwiches, it's Dunkin' Donuts, it's anywhere that has stuff. Whereas in most people, just like, sit down dining and they didn't think it would be impactful as well.
It's anywhere prepared.
Exactly, exactly.
So, I'll turn it over to Emily at this point to kinda, what, what you're looking at essentially.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Um, so, towns in Massachusetts have the ability to vote to adopt a zero-point-seven-five percent tax on meals, prepared foods. Um, this would apply to the same items as the state meals tax, which is six-point-two-five percent. So, the mechanism for collection, if this says something that town is interested in adopting, is it would be collected by the Department of Revenue and returned back to the town. If I'm saying this incorrectly, you know, uh, quarterly. So, as Chairman Candido said, seventy-five percent of municipalities in Massachusetts have already adopted this. As far as I could find, most municipalities will adopt it up to the max, which is the zero-point-seven-five percent. Um, as far as surrounding communities go, in Plymouth and Bristol Counties, there's only five municipalities that haven't done this, Lakeville being one of them. And the range of revenue is from two-point-two million about in Plymouth, down to twenty-six thousand dollars in Dayton. This was for fiscal year twenty-five revenue for those two towns. So, this is just as interstated an exploration as a mutual source of revenue. Um, if the town were to adopt it, say, at the next annual town meeting, um, we wouldn't start to see revenue because there's a, a reporting cutoff to the state, I believe, at the end of August. We'd have to report that it was accepted. We would see revenue beginning in the second quarter of the fiscal year.
Got it. All right, open it up.
Yeah, I would, Madam Chair, I would just say, based on what I read, um, I think it's an interesting idea. One caveat I have, as we, as we say, and I don't know when this gets presented to the, um, to the town, but, um, we're, okay, it says, "Adoption of local meals taxes being explored as an additional source of revenue to help ensure Lakeville is able to maintain a balanced operating budget without the need of a tax override." So, I, I don't think we wanna overpromise and say if we do this, there won't be a tax override.
Yep.
That would, that's my one comment on the, on that.
Yep, I agree.
I, I guess my question...
We're clawing at it, but...
Yeah.
Madam Chair, through you, but, uh, has anybody done a, and I hate taxes, just to be a hundred percent clear. Nothing about a tax I like, however, I agree with this. Because I saw the budgets. Uh, but my question, has anybody done, uh, any numbers to see where this would be? I, I know, I, I always say, geez, we could use more, you know, restaurants, but there's a lot. When you look at Subway's and pizza places, all the stuff and Dunkin', there, there is a lot. There's some revenue there.
Twenty-four, twenty-fourteen, it was thirty, thirty-six thousand dollars in the study that we did.
Twenty-fourteen.
And, and I don't know, yeah, yeah.
Have we done any type of, well, I'm gonna go to Emily because Emily did all this. Emily, did you look at these numbers at all?
So, as far as projection for Lakeville, I didn't do.
But, yeah, we...
I, I think it'd be a great idea if we're gonna present this at a town meeting to show estimated numbers. And, you know, if we start using some, getting some more economic in town, then we could probably build more restaurants and they're higher end with higher taxes. But, Maureen and I work on that.
We're gonna get, we're opening a restaurant any day now.
Not a restaurant, but just to get, get tax, like, what's up, yeah. Give it all, bedrooms.
Any more questions, comments?
Is there a way to get that number from the Department of Revenue, like, if it's just tied to the six-point-two-five percent tax that already exists?
We've heard that it exists, but we haven't found it easily available.
Fair enough.
The goal of this kinda conversation was to see if there was support. We didn't wanna come with an article and then there's no appetite from either board.
Yeah.
So, this would, at the earliest, this would come at the annual, so...
I mean, I'm happy, an official vote, just to get a feel for the room on the finance committee. I mean, I, I certainly, something I support and I think it's worth looking into. Yeah, definitely.
Board members, any comments, questions?
No, I, I, I believe this is something we should capitalize on, definitely.
Pretty soon they're gonna start, you know, um, taxing your, well, coffee, but I'm just saying.
I'm just gonna...
Everybody used to say that all the time. Pretty soon they're gonna start taxing your coffee.
Three times.
What's going on now? Um, all right, does that give you the answer that you need to move forward and some direction on, um, how we can set it up for possible warrant article for spring town meeting?
Yeah, um, obviously, it's been done by seventy-five percent of the state, so I'm sure we'll be able to find a warrant article, though.
Yeah, I don't think that's gonna be a challenge.
Right, but we'll share information as we get it.
But I appreciate you going and doing just what we asked about revenue sources. And even though this is not easy, this is kind of the low-hanging fruit, um, to continue to build revenue streams within the town. All right?
I have one quick question about this.
Absolutely.
Dan, we've got Dunham Pond Road. So, with regards to this tax, um, how does that affect, um, sorry? How does that affect, uh, food vendors from outside of the town?
You mean like?
Like food trucks? Yeah, like food trucks and so forth.
The stationary food trucks are considered restaurants, but...
How does that work, though? Cause they're not, if they don't, if they don't live here in town?
They pay, they're paying taxes. It's going through when they're doing their revenue reporting.
So, it goes through revenue?
Yeah.
Okay.
It doesn't come to us. It goes to revenue and then comes back to us, if I, if I'm saying that correctly.
Yeah, so, part of the reason why there's like a, a lag, I guess, three or four months, is the DOR comes in and basically sets the receipts. That they'll then, uh, when you buy food and then they collect it, it'll be like a different line.
Yeah.
Then they come back and give it to us. But if you sell prepared food in Lakeville, you'll get taxed.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, yeah, I was just, I was just curious if, if there's an additional tax.
No, the mechanism goes through this.
It's the same.
And just, just to be clear, it's not a tax on the vendor. It's a tax on the person buying the food, right?
It's a tax on the food, not the person.
Tax on the food, okay, all right.
Just to clarify.
Yes, thank you, appreciate it. Yeah.
Great, all right, um, I did see our veterans agent here waiting patiently.
She's still here.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you need us?
You need us, Samo?
I don't think so. I didn't see anything else.
We're useless, get out.
Was my mic hot?
I'll make a motion to close the finance committee meeting.
Second. Ten-eighths, I. Cost ninety-nine.
Right, I. Beels eye. Good evening, have a good night.
Thank you very much. Good night. It was spirited. Item number six, discuss impossible vote on the veterans parking space. Uh, a couple of months ago, um, I, gosh, maybe a year ago, um, I had brought up the possibility of this. Um, and we brought it back up and now we have our veterans agent. Um, many communities have designated parking, parking space for veterans. Um, and we would like to see if we can adopt something like that in the town of Lakeville for some of our public buildings. Let our veteran agent identify herself and have a conversation.
I'm Christine Boone. I'm the veterans agent. Thank you for giving me this time. Um, as a person that doesn't live in town, that was overwhelming. Um, uh, so with the veterans parking spaces, it's not gonna be fifty parking spaces. I think each building should designate one or two, um, parking spots next to the handicap spots. Obviously, they won't go ahead of the handicap spots. Um, I have done some purchase-in research, um, myself and they sell on Amazon and the highest one is twenty-three dollars, um, for one sign. And, um, maybe we can ask DPW to put them in as well as all the other signs. I keep asking them to put in. Um, so I would think maybe town hall, maybe by the post office. I'm trying to think of where veterans would need a little bit extra help, um, and this goes for the dependents as well. We did also, um, something that I hold true is the paint your spots, parking sp- spaces. And I wanted to possibly get the high school art students or people with artists to really get the community involved into making these spaces perfected for the veterans. And that is to paint the veterans sign instead of...
Are you proposing like a, a contest with the design?
Yes, yes.
And then the winner paints the spots?
Yes, I have talked about it before that, you know, because I feel like, um, it will give the community and the schools, um, a little bit more buy-in to the town if we do hold a lottery slash win in. I don't wanna say, you know, somebody's not gonna win, but maybe we could adopt those spots that people see fit to create for the veterans. But for just the signs itself, I can go ahead and order them on Amazon with the blessing.
That's to be started. Um, because I know you would list, if I can, Madam Chair, I'm sorry, um... I mean, if we did it with one spot at all municipal buildings, you know, cause you've got your building department, you get your police department...
That's what I'm writing down. I'm like, town hall, COA.
Your library, you see, and obviously the COA and, and the, um, public work.
Fire departments, police department as well in the parks.
That's what I said, yeah.
And the building department, yeah. So, one for each municipal building in town. Does that sound reasonable to everyone, like one spot?
My only concern would be the quality of the Amazon signs.
I can, I would love to order one. That's why I hesitated to order a bulk amount, just so I could possibly see it. And then I would bring it in and let, um, it wouldn't be here in time when I got the notification. But, um, I've seen the ones that I follow on Amazon, um, they're the ones that use during Lowe's. It's the same, um, and I talked to a Lowe's, a Lowe's employee and they said that they ordered them off of Amazon.
Can you send us the link?
Yeah, absolutely.
The one that you're looking for through, you know?
Yes, absolutely.
If you could send it, you know, and, send it to, um, Andrew and he can dis- distribute it out.
I tried to get one in time, but...
Yeah.
The two-day shipping isn't really a thing.
No, but I think it's, I think it's a, I think it's a fantastic idea.
So, quality aside, we can, we can make it?
Yeah, we can get behind this.
Yeah, we can get it quality.
I can get behind this, absolutely.
All right, um, so I, I would suggest, um, just as Member Carboni just said, that we would make, we would designate one, one spot for every municipal building. But then I wanna put the caveat, do we wanna do like... John Pond Park, do we wanna do historical um Town Hall? Like, I I I think we might be overstepping if we do everyone, so maybe we name them out, which ones?
I think my recommendation, you you, that initial list that came up, I don't think we need to go.
Okay, well, don't forget where we vote.
Uh, yes, I I would agree with that, Moon Pond would be nice, and then the primary municipal buildings, I think. My opinion is.
Okay, so Town Hall, Police, um, Police Building, C O A Building, New Fire, um, Department, Parks.
Well, Park, yeah, the Moon Pond, yeah. Town Hall and, yeah.
Okay, so if someone wants to make a motion pending quality check?
There's one other comment to it, we wanna make sure that if we, if we're painting in the roads, we wanna make sure that we're using something that's gonna be durable. We defer to the Highway Department, I'm not saying we use, but if we have. Okay that the high school students can submit their design, but need to consider when we come time to do it.
So like, did you, sorry to interrupt, a cost comparison, um, and to paint? And I only know this because my daughter just painted her senior spot, um, it's very expensive.
It's durable.
To use durable paint, um, just one gallon of paint cost me eighty-two dollars. Um, and that's special paint to go through all the weather, um. And then if you're thinking colorful, three colors, you know, especially red, white, and blue, it's gonna really add up versus just the signs for now.
Oh.
And I would love to revisit the painting.
And that's right, cause I thought you were doing both, and I'm okay with this style of design, and then we can expand it later on.
Yeah.
Um, I would support that.
I'm good with that as well. Anyone else? Then I will take a motion.
I did so moved.
Oh, you so moved it?
I second her so moved.
Oh, I am so moved.
I'm very moved.
Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
On I, plug I.
Candy to I.
Carboni, I.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go back to the beginning, as it were. Um, we're gonna go to the minutes, uh. Yeah, we haven't done the minutes. I I run a crazy ship here, um. I have one correction that's ministerial, and then no other corrections. Anybody else have any?
I have one.
Okay.
Page five. Um, under the first motion.
Yep.
The voted.
Yep. Do I have you as abstaining?
No, I'm Chair Carboni, I, and Vice Chair Carboni, I.
Oh, nice. Every woman. I will correct that.
Thank you. Oh, and it is it down the one below it too, sorry.
Cause I do, um, cotton piece, I'll check for it all. So moved.
I almost added to sing that song.
Okay, I'll take a motion.
Motion to approve the Select Board Meeting Minutes of October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, as amended.
Seconded.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing done, roll call.
On I.
Plug I.
I'm Carboni, I. Gotcha, alright. Let us go to item number two, T A goals. Andrew, you've put the most comprehensive list in the history of lists together for us. I wanna see a track mark next to every single item.
Yeah.
Now, this is the same list that we voted on two months ago-ish.
Probably two and a half months ago.
Two and a half months ago, um, there's some updates on there um as well, but I will let Andrew present.
So I won't go all, go through all, I think forty-five as Paul puts it, um, then I added like maybe seven or eight at the very end. So I'll, I'll pinpoint a few highlighted ones. Um, obviously, some, a lot of these goals are like full fiscal year goals, they're not gonna be completed in the first quarter. Um, the biggest one I'm most excited about is the website upgrade. Um, we finally got a project manager on that. Um, and hopefully it's gonna launch in two or three months or so, um.
That's item number four, right?
Yep, and goal number one.
Yep.
Um, skip into goal number two, um, item three. Um, obviously, we did the capital and operating budget together last year. Yeah, um, basically around March or so, um, I've pushed up the capital until um September this year. Um, I wanna get a good free cash number going into the operating budget to see exactly what we're dealing with. Um, when it comes to needing any sort of free cash for the budget.
Does this also open up the opportunity for possible grants for some of these items? Um, for the, some of the capital items that get presented, does it give you some time to work with it instead of having them presented in March? Or is that immaterial?
Um, I would say immaterial. Um, the ultimate goal was really to see, I wanna, I guess, bank, I guess. A certain amount of money going into the hard season, which I'm gonna say is January to June. So, we're ready, kinda have any sort of flexibility, so um the capital plan is, I guess, more strict than it normally would be. Um, but the process is ongoing. I hope to meet with the committee in two weeks or so initially. And I'll share the whole list with the whole Select Board when I do, obviously.
And Andrew, we had a correction on the free cash number as well, that goes into being able to use that capital. I don't think we discussed it.
Not extensively, no, I I made a correction on an email.
Yep.
But initially we thought it was a million, it's actually more like a million point seven.
Yep.
So, gives us more flexibility. Um, last year, we didn't really put any money towards stabilization. Or capital stabilization, it looks like we probably can this year, which is good news, um.
Will this free up any money to service debt as well, or no?
Gives us the flexibility if we have to, yep. Yep, um, obviously, we just kinda talked about goal number four, which is to um research revenue opportunities. Including the meals tax, so um that's ongoing. Um, there's a few community one stops, I think, that are kind of in the cooker, I guess. Um, that probably I don't wanna share until later on, but um flexibility involved. Um, a big goal of of mine also is to develop a tax title for closure auction process with the finance and land use teams. Um, what we're gonna do is come out with a sale of town-owned land policy. Um, you wouldn't believe how many people in a given year reach out looking to buy town land, um, so we wanna put together what that looks like. Um, but then what is really, I think, the focus of this one is to create a butter program. And I think the Clark Shores community is gonna be the focus of that initial effort. There's about nineteen properties in there, um, between the size of a shoebox to the size of this room. So we'd like to develop a process to get rid of it, essentially. Um, Emily's actually drawing the lucky straw on that one. But we, I mean, we found a lot, a lot of the stuff we do in this um town, it's been done before, so there's, there's a lot of good, um. Policies we can kind of Lakevilleize pretty easily.
I'll be using that term forever now.
Um, goal number three, I have uh objective one, support the Economic Development Committee. Um, that's uh something Emily and I, um, I think we're taking turns going to meetings. Um, but that's a high focus, obviously, um, it's a, it's more of a, it's not just a fiscal year, it's a multi-year kinda effort. Even if you draw someone in, by the time they build or do something, it's, it's years away. Um, research and implement grant opportunities for for community one stop. Obviously, I've um talked to it with the board, but we got a grant for ninety-four thousand. Um, Emily and myself are putting together the R F P um in the next coming weeks, so we hope to have some sort of consultant on board. I would guess probably by Christmas.
And this consultant is gonna be focusing on economic development plans and like a playbook?
Yeah, playbook, they're gonna look at all, it's kind of like a corridor study, but then also like a playbook of how we can influence. Locals, the local part of it. Um, the biggest, toughest goal I would say is to renegotiate the I M A agreements with the city of Taunton. And also to explore the possibility of an I M A with the city of New Bedford. Um, new, city of New Bedford and Freetown, who would also be involved in that, are both interested. Um, and that's an ongoing conversation we're having. Um, another stakeholder in that is the schools. They've expressed interest in um getting water at the schools. Um, so I think that's, it all, they all kinda, all the stakeholders are kind of, it's an ongoing discussion. Um, and the city of Taunton, I reached out to, not that long after I started, about potentially renegotiating the I M A agreement. Um, and it sounds like they're interested, but they have some things that they wanna see in it. Um, obviously, we have stuff we wanna see in our part of it, um, and it's kind of at a standstill right now.
Had a question on that.
Yep.
Did we ever get some more definitive data on actual use of, um, like, we always allocate. Um, when we're setting up our water allocation.
Yep.
How are we auditing that that's really what we're allocating and what the person is using? And is there opportunity to have that conversation about the allocations? Not, you know, being underutilized or overutilized in some, in some instances?
Yeah, yeah, um, I think that conversation started with my predecessor interim town administrator, he'd reached out to Mike Aruda. Um, Taunton has expressed that they would give us any report we need for that, and I think what we had found is. Basically use about a half of what we allocate.
And that, that was my assumption, we, we tend to allocate. Um, based on a gut instinct and flow, it's like, you know, skeptic flow instead of, you know, actual use.
That's why most of our current uh water applications, we take the vote that we reserve the right to come back and change the allocation. If the water usage shows that they don't need everything.
That would be a really long meeting, but yes.
Yes, I know, exactly. Um, for goal number four, I think I mentioned it at every single Select Board meeting. But the class and compensation study, um, doing that internally is quite a bit of work, um, it's fills up most of Lacy's day. Um, but I think it's something desperately needed. Um, not only the compensation, but also the classification part of it as well. Um, and then an effort that you'll see during the budget season is a town-wide strategic plan. Um, it'll probably be a focus of our meeting either in November, December, to get Select Board goals. Um, but this will also be town department goals, and we'll track them similar to how you're seeing this. But with better pictures and you'll probably invite people to present on their goals and.
I think, I think the department heads would love to be able to have that conversation. Because if you remember, well, we went through the budget process last year, they were so happy to say, you know, this is what I, we've accomplished. And, you know, with, with what you've given us, you know, we served this many meals, or, you know, we were able to do all these streets. Like, I, I for one was flabbergasted how many streets that the D P W had on their plan. Um, because that was three times more than I thought they were, they would be able to get to, so. Being able to point to their wins and even some of their, you know, their, their losses. I think that's an important part of their ownership of uh of their departments, and giving them that opportunity is really a good way to have them cemented. That, you know, that's the expectation, and that's what we, um, that's what we love for them, you know?
Yeah, I agree, for sure. Um, and then, goal number five, I have the most highlights. Um, it's becoming clear that we, um, I would say we need an on-call, um, O P M contractor services. Um, I think Emily's doing a lot of three-quote construction processes that ideally, we could just have an on-call person deal with. Um, cut down a lot of administrative time and obviously efforts from the departments. Um, there's no update currently, but that's something that I'd like to do, did it in previous jobs I've been at. Um.
Look, um, Member Carboni, was there an attempt at one point in twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-three? To implement an on-call O P M? Was it the same?
Mm-hmm, everything?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, those contracts expired, I think, uh, the month before I started.
Okay.
Yep, but it was Palm Roy, I get the other ones. Um.
Those are P, are cheap.
There's three of them. It was Apex, which was Environmental Partners, Palm Roy.
Was one, and then there's another one.
R T A.
R T A.
George, uh.
Yep, George Figueroa.
Um, oversee implementation of the capital plan, including new fire station. Um, it's one of those things where, um, obviously, we, it takes the. It's a lot of the flair of it, we make the request for capital projects, go to town meeting, get them approved, but then actually go out and do them. Um, it's a lot of work, um, so I like to see, oversee it probably better going forward.
But anything you can do will save us significant costs, um, you know, any of the projects that you take on. As opposed to us wrapping it into um the overall project.
Hmm.
Um, e- even, you know, even the smallest thing gets the fees attached to it, um, if, if we're not doing it ourselves, so. There's, there's value to it.
Um, and then. Well, obviously, I think multiple people on this uh Select Board have, have seen it, but when it comes time to actually construct the fire station. Weekly construction meetings, that might take a focus of mine on, on some stuff, maybe Emily on certain, certain weeks. Um, but that's, it's gonna be probably every week, um, all the time. Um, probably one of the biggest goals out of all of my goals is to create a facility slash town-owned property improvement master plan. Uh, Paul O'Neath has put that together, and he is gonna continue to do that through the coming months. And so my goal at the end would be um to have a, a kind of a thick capital plan. Where it kinda shows what a capital plan is, what the requests are, individual requests, what I'm recommending. But then also to show the community and the Select Board what our assets are, how they're doing, what do we see our weaknesses.
Will it also have useful life cycle information on it?
Yep, yep, um, I think it's, there's probably twenty categories per building. Um, so it'll show us what we need to do, um, it'll include quotes for stuff that has, I guess, poor um characterization. So it'll be a very, I think, comprehensive plan of everything, um, so. And then the last one is obviously Route seventy-nine is the biggest probably focus. Ongoing weekly in my schedule, um, there's a lot of land takings that are currently still ongoing, but um. Communication for that is gonna be key, um.
Do we have copies of any of the um stakeholder issues as we go through? Um, because I know.
Yeah, every question gets documented, every phone call, email gets documented by the project team, and we respond to them.
Okay, so is there somewhere people can log in to see that?
No, that's all like internal type of stuff. Um, I think what we're gonna try to do is put a, um, something on the website. Where it kinda says this is what's gonna happen next month, what's going on, um, it's a complicated project, it's gonna take probably four or five years. So, um, it's obviously gonna be a question, Select Board will have to probably answer on the, on the streets is what's going on. Um, so, we have all the answers on the project team, so I would say funnel, funnel them that way. Um, but it's a weekly thing I have to attend and go over, so. And then some of the extra goals, I guess we'll call them, that have been added since this, is to assist with the education. Um, to the community on the impending Old Colony District and Dead Exclusion Votes. Uh, we've put out one item, Town Clerk's Office has put out a handful, and we're gonna put out two or three more in the weeks to come. Um.
If you could put it out with. More specific language than is in the informational part of the ballot. Because, as I mentioned, the wording uh from Bond Council, not from our wording, but from Old Colony Bond Council. Makes it look like the residents of Lakeville are on the hook for the whole project.
Yeah.
When you're reading it, um, it, it doesn't read like, you know, this small portion of the project. Um, and I know that's gonna be a really difficult educational point uh for the residents.
I agree, it's a, it's a complicated vote, um, of the five town administrators, we argued about what each question meant extensively. So obviously, the average person's.
Average, yeah, they're gonna be at the ballot saying, I don't even.
Know what this means.
Know what this means.
Yeah, so we're trying to, I guess, knock down the walls on confusion. Um, we've talked about this num- number of times, but we, we're putting out the Town Council R F P that went out um two weeks ago. Um, and it's due December fifth, so um that'll be a big focus of ours in the coming months. Um, obviously, this has kind of been discussed as well recently, um, is the S H I Affordable Housing Reporting. Um, that's kind of fallen on Nate Darling and myself to do, and it really kind of falls on the town planner. Um, so, um, we're in compliance right now with all of the stuff that we need to do. Um, not necessarily tied to this, but smart growth as well, so all our reporting is, I guess, top-notch right now. Um, and I guess, in general, a lot of these goals, I, I mentioned this before, or it's not just me, it's a team of people. Um, in fact, most of these. Um, in fact, most of these don't necessarily come from me, or I'm not gonna deal up day-to-day with, but I kinda organize them all together. Um, so it's a good team, good team. So, um, I, I think we're on track to accomplish every goal by the end of the fiscal year. Some of these I'm gonna need to walk on, but feel good about them.
Board members, any questions?
Thanks for putting that list together.
Very comprehensive list, thank you.
Now we can't say, what are you doing? What are you doing with your time? We know.
Comprehensive and aggressive.
Yep. Okay.
Thank you.
Moving on. Item number four, discuss impossible vote to award contract for new fire station water line project and authorize town administrator to sign any contract documents pending legal review. Bids for the fire station water main extension were due on October ninth. Town received six bids. The lowest bid being two seventy-two, seven fifty-nine, which is a hundred and sixty thousand less than we had.
About a hundred and thirty.
Hundred and thirty?
Yep.
Thousand less than we had, um, originally anticipated. It was submitted by RFS Corp. Submissions were received by Par Corporation, the project engineer for completeness and accuracy. Do we have any questions about the water line or about the price of the water line or the, uh, or the procurement? Hearing none, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion that we award, um, the water main extension on Bedford Street, which is Route eighteen, contract in the amount of two hundred and seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars and seven cents to RFS Corporation. And to authorize the town administrator to sign the project contract contingent on its review and approval by town's legal counsel.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Hunt, aye.
Plug aye.
Candido aye.
Carboni aye.
All right. Moving right along. Item number five, discuss impossible vote on Thorndike Project Liaison. Did anyone submit to Andrew their interest?
Select board member, right?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. We're gonna have a select board member and a planning board member, um, just be part of the liaison. And liaison meaning, um, whoever this person is, they will sit in the meetings and kind of bring it back to the board, just like liaison for the other roles, and be kind of that conduit, um, to get information back to the board.
What kind of meetings? Is these planning board meetings? Are these Thorndike meetings?
Thorndike meetings.
Yeah, they would be Thorndike meetings.
Are they public meetings?
No.
Oh, so they're just, they call a meeting?
They're informational. What they'll do is they'll say, we're thinking about this, and then you'll bring it back to the board.
My guess is probably a lot of those are during business hours.
I would have to say all of them would probably be within business hours.
Yep.
I'm interested, but it's tough with my full-time job. Uh, we have no idea how many meetings they're gonna call, right?
Shouldn't be very many. Uh, I think they wanna just touch base after last week's meeting. Um, and then they wanted to schedule one after, 'cause they're putting together all those question, questions, questions and answers, and they wanna kind of go over that before they send it out to everybody.
They're probably remote meetings. They're not gonna.
Yeah, they're all.
Drag us to their office.
Yeah, they're not in person. They'll all be, uh, Zoomer teams.
And I'm sure they'll put out a, hey, general availability, and I'm gonna say, a meeting's two o'clock. You either come or you don't. They're probably gonna be.
Yeah, they ask for availability.
Yep. I would be willing. Anybody else? I have a strong desire.
I, I wouldn't want to take this away from you. I, I did grow up on Cleopon Road and, and Reservoir Heights Country Club was my first paying job at two dollars and twenty-five cents an hour.
Yeah, I heard.
So I'm very familiar with that property, but I certainly would not want to take away your love of, of these types of meetings.
Why don't go that far? But I am interested in the project. Oh, I, you, you expressing interest?
Well, no, I was just gonna say that Mr. Hunt, with, with that compassion that you're just displayed, it would be probably a really good, uh, idea for the motion to come from you. And I'll second that motion.
So, I, I would make a motion then that, uh, member Plonka be the, uh, liaison for the Board of Selectment regarding the Thorndike Project.
And I'll second.
I have a motion and a second.
Pending, pending his availability.
The board is way too kind.
Any further discussion? You could go sit on other boards. I heard they're mean. Uh, roll call?
Hunt, aye.
Plug aye.
Candido aye.
Carboni aye.
Article number seven, discuss the possible vote to approve the sign and state lottery commission application for license to conduct a one-day game commonly called Beano for the Poniquet Athletic Boosters Club on eleven, eight twenty-five, from six PM to twelve PM midnight.
This is, uh, Madam Chair, this is the second time that they've, um, done this.
Mm-hmm.
Um, 'cause it was kind of an interesting thing, 'cause this hadn't come in front of the board before.
So who wants to make it? Well, it looks like the fire chief has already provided his approval for the event as well.
If I may, I'll make a motion, um, that we approve and sign the state lottery commission application for li-, uh, for license to conduct a one-day game commonly called Beano for the Poniquet Athletic Boosters Club for November eighth, twenty twenty-five, from six PM to twelve PM.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Hunt, aye.
Plug aye.
Candido aye.
And Carboni aye to twelve midnight.
Which would be twelve AM. Just making sure I didn't miss anything with all my skipping around. Um, yeah, well, yeah, fine then. All right, we're going down to the subcommittee and select board delegate update, updates. We're starting with Old Colony.
We have not had a meeting on, the next meeting is scheduled for November third, which I will not be able to attend 'cause we have a joint select board meeting that night.
Got it.
I'll be sure to get updates.
With Freetown. Uh, Fire Station Building Committee.
Oh, that would be me.
Okay.
Um, what do we have to update? No, we had a meeting and, um, we just worked out into what we're gonna be doing. We'll be meeting once a month. And then we'll have the weekly, um, smaller construction meetings. And it looks like we're gonna start to see some activity, um, next door in the next month.
So the turtle fences are?
Turtle fences are up. They've been monitored and checked, and double-checked and triple-checked. And we actually had a turtle class.
Oh, yeah.
We had to have a turtle class on how to identify the turtles and what to do when we identify.
Do you want me to sign you up?
Now looking for volunteers.
Be remote. Uh, all right. Technology Advisory Subcommittee.
Tentatively, so the October meeting was canceled, but the November meeting is tentatively scheduled for November ten, pending room availability.
Thank you. Uh, we don't have any updates, I'm guessing, on the Communication and Community Outreach Subcommittee?
Um, just that we've probably put a few things out through our, which I'll be bringing back to the select board, just, um, high level. Um, you know, what happens when information comes in and how it gets disseminated out. But so far, it's making it happen.
Mr. Hunt, will you update us on the Town Hall Building Reuse Subcommittee?
We met, uh, we discussed with the, uh, with the project people, uh, the ongoing situation at the Town Hall and their bid on how we would spend the twenty-five thousand dollars we are trying to, uh, appropriate at town meeting. Uh, we're kind of at a limbo right now until they do an evaluation and see if our plans are and thoughts are planable. And just to give us an idea of where we stand with everything and the possibilities there in the Town Hall.
Thank you for the update. Member Carboni, the EDC.
Uh, Economic Development Committee met last night. Um, we had Valerie Glenn, the president of the chamber, Grandbury Chamber, come speak to us, um, a little bit more about what they do and how we might be able to work with each other to bring in some, you know, just kind of some new vision. Um, we've been, we talked about there are ninety-four thousand dollars and, and what the next steps will be and how that will impact, you know, the timing of what we're looking to do. We talked about the survey. We should have our answers, um, solidified at our next meeting in November so that we can, um, prepare the surveys to go out to residents and businesses.
Word. And the EAC, the Energy Advisory Committee.
We thought there's really nothing. They have a meeting November fourth?
The third.
Third?
Third.
Okay.
Any new business or old business to come before the board tonight?
We have new business.
New business, yes. So I have a supplement, a supplemental that I gave to the select board. There is a, Mullin Hill is putting on a five K Veterans Day race. And because of our meeting schedule, we are not gonna meet again before this race is gonna take place. So I did put that information in your packets. I did follow up with everybody who, um, weighs in on, uh, road permits and all. None have any issues. This is a self-contained event.
Okay.
Um, and we have approved it previously, so I didn't really see, I didn't see anything that would be a hangup for that.
Did you a- admonish them for submitting it late?
Um, they didn't. It was, yeah, it was more a combination of me taking over the road permits and, and just seeing the, the logistics of the schedule that made me go, oh, we need to do this today, so.
Got it.
Thank you for considering it on short notice. That was no fault of anyone's but my own.
All right, well, I'll make a motion, um, that we approve the publicway license for Mullin Hill Christian Academy's, uh, Veterans Day five K fundraising race to be held from twenty-five Staple Shore, to be held from twenty-five Staple Shore Road on November eighth, twenty twenty-five, from eight AM to eleven AM, and approved with the attached route.
Second with discussion. Um, this will also be, uh, on the next agenda, um, to, uh, to ratify this vote.
Still loaded.
And any?
Uh, no detail required?
Nope. They're not crossing the, um, Bedford Street. No, rooting to, no.
One oh five.
One oh five, there you go.
November eighth, is that, I don't know the calendar, is that a Sunday?
Let me see.
Saturday?
Saturday. It's a Saturday.
Well, well, I defer to the chief. He doesn't see any safety issues, so, okay.
All right, motion and a second. Roll call?
Hunt, aye.
Plug aye.
Candido aye.
Carboni aye.
Motion passes. Uh, next select board meeting, November third. I will be unable to attend this meeting. So, uh, Vice Chair Carboni will be running this meeting. Uh, if you have ideas on items that you would like to be on the meeting, please send them directly to her as this will be her agenda.
And, and that meeting is at the Freetown Police Station?
It is a joint meeting with Freetown to discuss shared issues, the biggest one of them being the recall, um, warrant.
And do we have a time of that meeting?
They usually meet right after, so it's probably. We'll, we'll get clarification on that, but, 'cause I think their meetings are at seven.
They came to us last time, so.
Yeah.
Now we're going to them.
All right, um. I won't go over correspondence tonight, but we did have some correspondence. Do we have it here? Nope. All right. Um, we are gonna go now into executive session, uh, possible executive session pursuant to GL, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair, so declares Mount of Farms, Juicy, uh, Northeast Alternatives, Bud's, is it Bud's Goods or Bud's Country Provisions? Bud's Goods and Twisted Growers, and not to return into open session. So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Roll call?
Hunt, aye.
Plug aye.
Candido aye.
Carboni aye.
Thank you, everybody.